To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Speaking times will be determined by the total number of public comment cards and callers in the queue at the start of each public comment period. For one to 20 total speakers, each speaker will receive up to three minutes. For 21 to 39 total speakers, each speaker will receive up to two minutes. And for 40-plus total speakers, each speaker will receive up to one minute. No additional comment cards or calls will be accepted once the public comment period begins.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regular meeting of the Burbank City Council on Tuesday, December 17th, 2024. Please join me for a moment of reflection. This moment is intended to begin our meeting with the positive and collective support for our beloved community. The City Council welcomes everyone joining us this evening. We encourage you to take a moment to reflect on our community and the work we will be doing tonight. Although each of us has our own unique reasons for being here, we are united in our passion for our wonderful city. As we pause, let us consider our individual contributions and what they mean to those around us. Let us find solace in knowing that by working together with a shared spirit of community and partnership, we will always act responsibly for the betterment of Burbank. Now, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, how are you this evening?
I'm fantastic. How are you, Madam Mayor?
Couldn't be better. All right, let us conduct the roll.
Councilmember Anthony.
President and accounted for.
Councilmember Mullins.
Here.
Councilmember Rosati.
I am here.
Vice Mayor Takahashi.
Present.
And Mayor Perez. I guess I'm present and accounted for too. I like that one.
Thank you.
All righty. There will be two periods of public comment tonight. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the general public comment period and must submit cards or call before the general public comment period begins. The first public comment period is for general public comment on any matter concerning city business and/or any agenda item. If you are here in person and wish to speak during general public comment, you should have submitted a yellow public comment card to address the council. If you have not yet done so, please turn one in to Ms. Clark over here. If you'd like to participate in the general public comment by phone, please call now at 818-238-3335. That's 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until the general public comment period begins, at which time no additional calls will be taken. An additional public comment period will be available following the one report to council this evening. Finally, interpreters are also available in case anybody needs them. We have folks for Armenian and Spanish speakers. They will be found right here at the front. Thank you both for being here tonight. And if no one has asked for interpreters by the beginning of the public comment period, let these lovely ladies go home. All right. We have five announcements this evening.
Following our announcements for December 17th, 2024. Attention, all animal lovers. Adoption fees will be 50% off starting December 12th and ending December 31st. To adopt your new furry friend from the Burbank Animal Shelter, visit us between 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Tuesday through Saturday. Let's get them home for the holidays. For more information, call 818-238-3340 or visit burbankanimalshelter.org. The Burbank Fire Department has joined with ABC Seven and other Southern California fire departments to sponsor the 32nd Annual Spark of Love Toy Drive. Donations will be accepted starting November 29th through December 24th. For further information, please contact the Burbank Fire Department at 818-238-3473 or visit abc7.com/sparkoflove. The Burbank City Clerk's Office is currently accepting applications for vacancies on the Infrastructure Oversight Board and the Planning Commission for unexpired terms ending July 31st, 2025. The deadline to submit an application is Friday, December 27th at 5:00 p.m. If interested, please apply online at burbankca.gov/vccapplication. For more information, please contact the Burbank City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email cityclerks@burbankca.gov. The City of Burbank is gathering feedback through January 15 to help improve its bus stops. The community is invited to share their thoughts about any features and amenities they would like to see at the bus stops as well as their general experience with transit. To complete the survey, visit the City of Burbank website or scan the QR code on your screen. Volunteers are needed for the homeless count in Burbank at 7:30 p.m. on Tuesday, January 21st, 2025. Facilitated by the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, this point-in-time count is a visual snapshot of the number of people experiencing homelessness in Burbank. Volunteers may register by visiting theycountwillu.org. For more information, contact the Burbank homeless team at 818-238-5182. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
Mr. City Manager, how are you doing this evening?
Very well, Madam Mayor.
Great. We love to hear it. Do you have anything to report?
Yes, I do. I do have one item. I'd like to call up Russell Friesland from our Community Development Department, and he will be providing a brief presentation on some of our continued improvements with respect to our city's ADU permitting process.
Mr. Friesland, welcome to the council.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, councilmembers Mullins, Anthony, and Rosati, city staff, and members of the general public. My name is Russell Friesland, and I am the Plan Check Manager for Building and Safety here with Building and Safety Staff. Tonight, the Building and Safety Division of the Community Development Department is here to announce the Burbank Pre-approved Accessory Dwelling Program. Two years ago, the city announced the pre-approved program utilizing several of the plans from the City of Los Angeles that we would accept. Today, staff is presenting the City of Burbank's independent pre-approved ADU program, which we are calling BPAP for short. This program will create a library of pre-approved ADU plans which residents may utilize to streamline the ADU permit. Architects, engineers, and designers will be able to enroll in this program directly with Burbank and submit their plans for review and approval. The city's website will be updated with each candidate's design and contact information in order for residents to view and contact the designers for the pre-approved plans. These plans are required to comply with all municipal and state building codes. In addition, these ADUs will include wildlife, urban interface, fire zone requirements. We will accept enrollment of new construction of single-story accessory dwelling units, including manufactured and factory-built units. The square footage will be limited to a maximum of 850 square feet for a studio and one-bedroom unit and 1,000 square feet for a two-bedroom unit as per the current municipal code. By providing this service, the residents will benefit from quicker permit issuance. The intent of these pre-approved plans is to expedite the permit review by not requiring plan check for architectural, structural, life safety, and energy review at the time of the permit submission, as this has already been provided. Sorry about that. Planning has also provided square footage and height requirement, which have been included in the BPAP correction list, which can be found on the city website. This is meant to provide residents with the consistency in design, code compliance, and compatibility. All pre-approved ADUs listed will be accepted for the full triennial code cycle. The new cycle begins January 1st of 2026. If designers would like their plans to remain active, they will be required to update the drawings to reflect the current code cycles requirements. Staff also recommends that residents who wish to use any of these pre-approved plans first speak with Planning Division to verify that new construction is allowed within their residential zone and to confirm the maximum square footage of units allowed within their For further information and frequently asked questions, please refer to CDD's Building and Safety Pre-approved ADU website. Web address and QR code are shown on the screen. If residents have any further questions not addressed on the website, they can reach out to our general information email, building@burbankca.gov, or myself, Russell Friesland, at rfreisland@burbankca.gov. I would also like to inform you of one additional piece of information. CDD staff would like to announce that we are presenting the city with the first free-to-the-public pre-approved ADU. City staff has, on their own time, developed the architectural, structural, energy requirements, and has enrolled this in the BPAP program anonymously for third-party review. The plan check review was completed by one of the city consultants, and all building code requirements have been deemed as met. This provided us with the unique opportunity to verify the process prior to making this announcement. This is a 432-square-foot studio unit that reflects a southwest design that can be found throughout the city, as well as taking into account constructibility and energy efficiency. With this, I wish to thank you for your time, and this concludes tonight's CDD announcement.
Thank you so much for the presentation, Mr. Friesland. We appreciate. Now, if council has any brief questions, Councilmember Mullins.
I'll make it brief because this is really exciting that we have our own designs and that we're making available for our residents.
Yes.
Because it... Tell me the benefit for doing that, just in case I don't know. So how is that going to cut down on time? Is it going to cut down?
So the intent is, right now, someone submits a brand-new process for a permit. They've got to go through the plan check process. That can take anywhere from three months to, in some cases, over a year, depending on how responsive the applicant is. By having this in place, that process for plan check is done prior. So when you come in and say, "I want to use the pre-approved BPAP one that I just announced," the whole plan check process for that is already done. It's completed. So Building and Safety will be able to look at the site plan, the site requirements, and have that review done within, we're anticipating, 30 days. We do have Planning, Public Works, BWP Water, Electric, and Fire that will be doing their review, but again, the life safety, which is the bulk of the plan check process, has been taken care of.
But it has to be the same square footage that 435 square feet?
So if they're using the one we just announced, there's no modifications to it. That's the one. They would tell us, "I want to use BPAP 24001," which is what we're calling it, and they would submit a permit application indicating that. And then what we, city staff, would do is we would then invite them to upload their site plan, their general information sheets, as well as any additional information that's required, and then we will upload the architectural, structural, and energy report files for the final plan check and approval.
Thank you. I'm really excited to see this program take in place, so I appreciate it.
Councilmember Rosati.
Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight with your presentation. What is the utility hookup? Is it a separate utility hookup, or can you tap into the existing?
So per state requirements, it can be either. It will really be up to the owner of the property. The state says you do not have to have a separate utility. My understanding is you can tap off of the existing and have a sub-panel for the ADU. That is something more that BWP Electric would be better at giving information on, but I can go back and double-check with them and report to you at a later date if need be.
I did have one more question. The major topic is always the garage conversion. Have you given any consideration on... Or is it because garages are just varied in square footage?
Garages are really a tricky item because what we've seen with the over 800 ADUs that have come in for plan check in the last three years, garages always are brought in as, "Oh, this is how it's built." And then, once construction starts, they find out there's no foundation, or the slab is two inches, not four inches. So a pre-approved program for conversion really isn't something that can be done, and reaching out to other municipalities, none of them have done that. It's always been brand-new construction.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anthony?
Just real quick, I wanted to follow up something Councilmember Rosati said. Does the state allow... Do you know offhand if the state allows municipalities to mandate separate metering for these pre-approved ADUs?
My understanding is you are not allowed to because the intent with the ADU laws is to try to keep the cost prohibitive.
So it's up to the person building it, whatever's cheaper for them, easiest for them, they get the cheapest?
Exactly.
Okay. And then one other thing, just me personally, I wanted to...
Briefly?
Yes, very briefly, very briefly. Burbank Pre-approved ADU Program, BPAP, that's the acronym.
Yes.
But the A stands for ADU, which is itself an acronym, so you're hiding an acronym and an acronym.
Yes.
I'm very disappointed. You're skating on thin ice here, Mr. Friesland.
We had... I mean, we've actually been working on this since February of this year, so we've thrown around a lot of different sort of acronyms, but BPAP is the one that kind of worked for us.
I'll allow it. I'll allow it. Fine.
You got a serious answer to your silly question. Our staff's on top of it.
Or else it would be BPADUP.
So, I mean, that doesn't work. They know what they're doing. Don't question them. Councilmember Tak... Vice Mayor Takahashi, any brief questions?
Very brief. So this is a practical question. First of all, just huge kudos for this program because it is a win, literally for everybody in the process, this is a win. So doing some work ahead of time to get this up and going, I'm sure, was a lot, but I'm so glad that you did it, so now, moving forward, it's going to be easier for everybody. So Councilmember Mullins mentioned the person who wants to build an ADU, what they would do. Now, I'm curious about the folks who are builders and designers of ADUs. If they want to get their design into the program, what is the steps that they would take to get that in?
So basically, the steps are, our webpage is actually live now. We put it up maybe 15, 20 minutes ago. In it, there's an enrollment form, which they basically fill out in email, similar to what they do with a permit application. There's also a enrollment requirements, which basically spells out everything we expect to see in the set of drawings. So from a layman's kind of perspective, it's very similar to how the permit process works. The difference is, there's no site. It's basically a building in a void, so that's the reason why we've discussed with planning their specifics that don't take into account a site, which would be square footage and height requirements. You're welcome.
Really, really quick, Mr. ...
You can ask a brief question while our city attorney glares at you.
This is exciting stuff that we're talking about. How would you pick if you had two designers or two contractors submit their design? How are you going to pick?
Everybody's... What it is, is everybody submits, so you could submit... Actually, all of the councilmembers could submit a design. It'll go through a plan check process, the same as what a permit does. Once it's been deemed approved, we put it up on our website, and then you, as a homeowner, can go to the website, look at what is there, and basically contact the design team.
Thank you so much. Just one more time for the folks watching at home. If they're interested and have questions, where can they call?
They can call the main number, which is area code 818-238-5220. That is Building and Safety's main number. They could email building@burbankca.gov, or they can email myself, rfreisland@burbankca.gov as well.
Thank you so much for the presentation, Mr. Friesland. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, how are you doing tonight?
Fabulous.
Great. I'm sure we're enjoying the glares from down there. Do you have anything to report on closed session?
Those are crow's feet. They're not glares. Just, for the record, all smiles. City Council, yes, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council for the benefit of the public. City Council met at 4:00 p.m. this afternoon to discuss two matters of existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. The first matter was Guardian of the Pines versus City of Burbank. It is a sequer writ case. The second item was Whitehead versus City of Burbank. It is a street racing accident case. The City Council took no reportable action this evening.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Now is the time for general public comment. I will be calling out the speaker's name, as well as the person who is next in line to speak, in order to keep public comment moving in a timely fashion. We have a designated seat right here in the front, in case anybody would like to sit there when they're up next, and a timer is also available on the podium. This is also the last call for anyone who needs an interpreter, or those staff will be released for the evening. Does anybody need an interpreter? Seeing none, you both are free to go home. Thank you so much for your service tonight. All right. As we move forward, persons may choose to use the first period of public comment to address on-the-agendized report, but will not be able to speak on the report a second time during the second public comment period. When you are ready to come up, please state your name for the record and correct me if I mispronounce your name. The general public comment period is now beginning, and no additional cards or calls will be accepted. Madam City Clerk, how many comment cards and calls do we have tonight?
We have 16 in-person cards and five callers.
All right, so since that is 21 total...
We circled to two minutes.
I know, I hear the groans. We are right above the cutoff. Since that is 21 speakers, everybody will be allotted two minutes in line with our council guidelines. Our first speaker tonight is Mike Van Gorder, followed by Andrew Seymour.
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I just want to, before you all go away for the break here, I want to bring the Harvard Center for Housing Justice's report to give you guys something to think about, about our housing situation over the next few weeks here. So, cost-burdened renter households hit an all-time high last year. Now, moderate cost burden is 30% of your income going just to housing. Severe cost burden, like my family, is 50% or more going just to housing. Total households that are cost-burdened, 22.6 million, including an all-time record high of 12.1 severely cost-burdened renters. That increased 209,000 more households entering severe cost burden just last year alone. Middle-income families like mine are the fastest-growing segment of the severely cost burden, but I want to really point out that half of all renter households in the United States are cost-burdened. Now, the average mortgage in Burbank is $1.2 million. Zillow rentals, the median rent on Zillow rentals is, just in general, $2,620. According to apartments.com, that is 38% higher than the national average. The average two-bedroom rent at this moment in Burbank for new units, available units, rather, is $3,910. Since 2013, the number of units with rents available below $1,000 fell by 7.5 million. There is no one tool to ameliorating this issue, but failure to respond leads to both the loss of community members as well as the loss of local control over our development options. So we must build. However, the Harvard study is also showing that building is starting to slow. So we need a holistic response that involves new housing and protecting existing community members. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Andrew Seymour, followed by Laura Bennett.
Hello. Good evening, honorable members of the Burbank City Council. My name is Andy Seymour. I'm here with the Higher Wages, Lower Rent Alliance, speaking about the airport. So the Burbank Airport Authority is investing $1 billion to redevelop its passenger terminal. So if Burbank wants a world-class airport, it must have world-class standards that support workers. So unlike LAX and Long Beach Airport, Burbank Airport workers aren't covered by an airport living wage law. While workers at Burbank Airport are only protected by the California minimum wage, the respective agencies that operate LAX and Long Beach Airport are considering an increase in their respective living wage laws. So we cannot allow Burbank Airport employees to fall further behind other regional airports in LA County. We also need to protect workers when contracts change hands, so we ask that the Burbank City Council call on the airport authority to establish these necessary standards. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Laura Bennett, followed by Ron Backs.
Hello. My name is Laura Vanuit. Good evening, honorable members of the Burbank City Council. My name is Laura Vanuit, and I am a proud member of Unite Here Local 11. As an airport worker, it is difficult to afford to live anywhere in Los Angeles. Workers in Burbank Airport deserve a living wage that will give workers the ability to stay housed in the communities where they work. Why is it that Burbank Airport standards are below that of LAX or Long Beach Airport? As the airport moves forward with $1 billion, the redevelopment that considers new concessions, the airport authority should consider a living wage, a worker-retention policy. Now is the time to raise standards. The standards already exist at LAX and at Long Beach Airport. Given that this council is an appointing authority to the airport board, we ask that you encourage the airport authority to adopt these necessary standards. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Ron Backs, followed by Sandra Santos.
Good evening, City Council. This is going to take longer than three minutes anyway, so I plan to be back January 14th to recap and continue. Okay, so let's go. Let's start. The city attorney has at least twice informed City Council that the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution guarantees property owners an implicit reasonable return on their investment. Let's do a little math. The value of a typical house in Burbank, three-bedroom, one bath, is roughly $1.2 million. 4% return on investment is readily available with a bank savings account. More lucrative options exist, but to be conservative, I will use 4% as the reasonable return. Using a simple interest calculation, the yearly return is $48,000 a year, that's $4,000 a month. Rentometer sets the asking rent... Rentometer sets the asking rent for the last year and currently at four thousand dollars, but this is gross. To have an accurate comparison between financial institutions and providing housing yields, we must determine net. The net on your bank account is the monthly interest. Common recurring monthly housing expenses are property tax, twelve hundred and fifty dollars, lawn care, one thirty, insurance, sixty dollars, maintenance repair, it varies, who knows, for a monthly net of two thousand five hundred and sixty dollars, which is far below a reasonable return. Then capital expenses, exterior painting, roof replacement, maintenance, AC replacement, major plumbing, repairs, and et cetera, further reduce the net. These are significant. They are unpredictable in occurrence and costs, but a housing provider must prepare for them. This reduces the future net income as the housing provider draws from the gross income to replenish the reserve account. And seven seconds to go, I'll see you January fourteenth.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Sandra Santos, followed by Adrian De Leon.
Hello, Madam Mayor and City Council members. My name is Sandra Santos. My sister was Sharon Santos, who was abducted twenty years ago from her home in Burbank. She loved it here and was truly excited to reside in this city. Tragically, in 2004, she was found dead in the trunk of her car after having been kidnapped, assaulted, and murdered. Burbank PD led the investigation, but it went cold, and twenty years later is still considered a cold case. This city has a proud reputation for safety and low crime. Sharon's is one of the few unsolved murders in the city's history. We believe that there are significant advances in forensic science, in particular genealogical DNA, that could solve her murder. As her family, friends, and supporters, we are offering our full support and resources to the City of Burbank and Burbank PD to facilitate the resolution of Sharon Santos's unsolved murder. We ask that you support our efforts. Our contact info is justiceforsharonsantos@gmail.com, which can also be found in this leave behind. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comment, and deeply sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adrian De Leon, followed by Mark Scroggs.
Before I introduce myself, I'd first like to say my condolences to the Santos. As someone who works in emergency services, I, I can definitely attest to that moment being very intense, so you have my full support. With that, good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, welcome, Councilmember Rosati, Anthony and Mullins, staff, and everyone in the chambers, and everyone watching digitally. I've been in these meetings for about a year at this point, but I'd like to formally introduce myself. My name is Adrian De Leon, lifelong Burbank resident, even though that life has been very brief so far. I'd like to speak on agenda item number seven, the George Isaiah Park Master Plan, and specifically the Performing Arts Center. So if you didn't know about John Burrows, they have an all-male dance team there, and as someone who, at this point, it's been several years in the past, but as someone who was the captain of some twenty-odd teenage boys, it would have been very appreciated to have a controlled environment to play very loud, sometimes explicit music, so I'm pretty sure the community would have really appreciated that. Also, just knowing that the parents of those twenty-odd sons know that their, their sons are in a very safe place. So with that, I can't promise that I'll speak at every council meeting moving forward, but I will be here, and with the rest of my time, I'd like to wish everyone happy holidays, and I hope you all keep warm.
Thank you for your comment and happy holidays. Our next speaker is Mark Scroggs, followed by David Donahue.
Happy holidays, everyone. Just want to report with the entertainment world, I can tell by seeing with the breakdowns in the upcoming projects and talking to different people, it's not going to get, people want to think, oh, we're going to survive till 25, but the first few months are going to be slow, except for episodic television. The one good thing is there's more shows being produced this year than last, more episodes, but it's going to still be slow until late March. So I know everybody's like, oh, it's going to be great in January. Well, it may, but, plus, a lot of the new projects will look like they'll probably shoot elsewhere from what we're seeing so far. We'll see what happens on that, if we can keep some stuff here, and that's, that'd be lovely. And there's also other economic factors, also animation is up and down on thin ice, but I just want to say we can build on the positives. The people who still want to be here, like I said, the people who want to survive till 25, which became the unofficial mantra, are really active. I've talked to several people, I'm going to talk to more of them about getting involved. A few people want to come to meetings, people want to get involved in their own community, how to get, meet that, so, which is a good thing. We also can promote, and I've said this before, what we have to offer. Sometimes here in Burbank, we just, like, we forget, we forget that we have the radio and podcasting. We have more of that here than elsewhere. I know it's spread out a little bit, but this is the hub. We have, the, the movie theaters are the busiest west of the Mississippi. I don't think people realize that either, unless you're there for Wicked or something. And we have a really good comedy and theater scene, considering. So I just want to end by saying thank you for everybody for the last, like, fifteen months I've been bringing this up. You guys have been great in responding, Mayor, former Mayor Schultz was too. I guess we want to get more people involved, people have been, I'm going to talk to a few of you about some different things later, but there, it's, I'm more positive than negative about a lot of this. You know, yesterday at your meeting, I actually had three offers come in, so maybe do that more often, so for holiday week, that's great.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you, Mr. Scroggs. Next, we have David Donahue, followed by Eric Hawke.
Honorable Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, Councilmember Rosati, Anthony and Mullins, welcome. And, okay, I'm just a little stunned because I'm the ADU guy, and that I was kind of thinking to come to this meeting, maybe not, then all of a sudden you have Russell Friesland drop this pre-approved ADU program, that, oh, hey, and I think I saw he and Mario Suna do a fist bump, because it was just like, hey, I'm like, yeah, you kind of deserved to do the fist bump, because that is a really big deal. So Mr. Prescott, if I could address him directly, thank you very much for allowing that to happen. It is beyond exciting to be able to see this. I've been working with the city for more than four years, advocating for pre-approved plans, and this is exciting. I did have a couple of questions. One of the things, because I understand this on a very granular level, is the life and safety issue applies to plans that are being submitted for the first time, they have not been reviewed. One question is going to be pre-approved ADU plans that have already been, gone through the system. They've already been stamped, these are good to go. Are they going to be expedited in any way? Two, is a factory, what I call factory-built, because it's easier to understand for people, but they're actually compliant with the HUD code Title 25, their term is a manufactured home, but I call them factories, a little bit easier to, people, Councilmember Mullins has called them pre-manufactured. The technical, for Mr. Prescott and his staff, a HUD-compliant ADU has already gone through the life and safety, it is exempt because it is inspected at the factory. The question that I would have, and I will address them, is it could be expedited because there's not that major component of review that has to go into an ADU to look at the life and safety issues, which is all the structural components. So, wow, really great news to see a pre-approved plan for the City of Burbank. Thank you very much to all the CDD staff.
Thank you for your comment, right on the money. Our next speaker is Eric Hawke, followed by Daniel.
Okay. Hey, hey, and good evening to the newly reconstituted City Council, wonderful city staff, and everyone who's taken time out of their evening to participate in tonight's meeting. My name for the record is Eric Hawke, the current president of the Burbank Community Band's Board of Directors, and I'm a bit sad that this marks my last presentation to this August body here in the year of 2024. I've enjoyed sharing news about our band's upcoming shows, but I look forward to returning in 2025 to share what the band will be doing for our eighty-fifth year, our big anniversary of rehearsing and playing music here in Burbank. And of course, I do, and the band does, appreciate all of the support that this, this city and this council have, have always, have given to the Burbank Community Band. This Saturday, the Burbank Community Band will have its last concert of the calendar year, this, with its December holiday show. It will be this Saturday, December the 21st, at 5:00 PM. The band will be performing at First Christian Church of Burbank at 221 South Sixth Street. And like all Burbank concerts, this is a free concert and open to all. The band has been working on some great pieces to celebrate the holiday season. We will be playing music from the holiday classic music movie, The Polar Express, which somehow is twenty years old this year. We have a really talented saxophonist, Howard Fallman, who will be soloing on the always lovely Have Yourself a Merry Little Christmas. We're very excited about an arrangement of the familiar Little Drummer Boy, but with an underneath melody of the song and percussion of Ravel's Bolero underneath it. And then we've also have a, we're working on a sing-along as well for the audience to fill the space with, with music, with band accompaniment. So please come out and support the band this Saturday, the 21st. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
No bell, all right.
Our next speaker will be Daniel, followed by Joe Pimienta.
Good evening, City Council, city staff, and fellow Burbank residents. I'd like to first congratulate Councilmembers Anthony and Rosati for your hard-fought election victories. I'd also like to congratulate Mayor Perez and Vice Mayor Takahashi on rising to your new leadership positions. You've proven yourselves deserving of these roles, and I look forward to seeing council under your leadership. I don't want to leave out Councilmember Mullins, who I very much respect and appreciate, and I look forward to all five of you working together with the residents and city staff of Burbank as we move forward together to improve this wonderful community. I'd like to thank and commend City Council and staff for working tirelessly over the past two years in response to the countless renters and housing advocates who have shown up and spoken out about their experiences and struggles of this city's renter majority. Just as a little update, council has unanimously passed legislation implementing stronger regulations around the rent eviction loophole, direct language prohibiting landlord retaliation, three-months relocation assistance for all no-fault evictions, and additional city staff to defend tenants against bad actors in our community. Councils also voted unanimously directing staff to provide policy options for universal just cause protections, additional month relocation assistance for qualified tenants, closing the rent eviction loophole once and for all, comprehensive harassment and retaliation protections, including a tenant pill of rights, a rent cap of four percent, potentially limited by the change in inflation, a rental registry, and funding a low-income and displacement assistance program. So I plan to hold all of you to your word, as I have the past couple of years. Many of you have made housing and homelessness important issues in your campaigns, including Councilmember Rosati. I've taken a look at some of your campaign flyers, which include your declaration that housing is a human right, and your prioritization of protecting renters, housing for all, and helping to alleviate rising renter costs. I know you plan to do a lot of talking up there on the dais, and I hope you plan to listen to us renters as we discuss our problems, as well as propose solutions.
Thank you for your comment, that's your time.
Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is Joe Pimienta, followed by Christina Boger.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Member Takahashi, council members, staff, and everybody in the chamber. I had prepared something completely different, but after looking at the announcement of the, of the Burbank pre-approved ADU program, I think, let's see if I can do both in, in the limited amount of time. So right off the bat, the pre-approved program sounds great. This is fantastic, and it also is an additional, it's an additional step into how to, how to be providing more housing, which is desperately needed. I do, however, just want to keep, you know, keep in light that, as someone who has been participating with the Burbank Tenant Union, we do get to see a lot of displacement happening due to rent evictions. So I do hope that this program, granted, it will be beneficial, we can also make sure that there are safety nets to protect the people that are currently housed, but in lieu of actually putting in this new program, there might be the opportunity for those people to be displaced. We have seen that happen before, so we just want to make sure that that is in the plan to make sure that the people that are currently living here can remain living here. As we, if we like to think, it's good to have safety nets for the current residents planning for a better and more, and more sustainable future. With my remaining time, the thing that I had previously wanted to talk about is something that I hear in this chamber that is not particularly any issue, it's just something that I hear in this chamber a lot, and I have opinions about it, so I'm going, I'm going to verbalize it. We hear very often about how everyone in this chamber has the main focus of always focusing on the residents of Burbank first, and that is excellent, that is really good. However, I think it's important to remember that Burbank does not live in a vacuum. So the things that happen at the state level affect the residents of Burbank, the things that happen, that are happening at the federal level affect the residents of Burbank. So for example, when we get to see what is happening in Palestine, there are a lot of residents that are Palestinian, living in Burbank, and that affects them directly, very much like there are a lot of people with complex immigration status that are currently living in Burbank, and therefore, that affects Burbank. So when we say that we are looking for the residents of Burbank, it's important to look at the full picture. Thank you for your time and for all your work.
Thank you for your comment, that's your time. All right. Our next speaker is Christina Boger, followed by Kate Kundoff.
Good evening. My name is Christina Boyer, and I'm an attorney and public counsel, all good. Many local jurisdictions have strengthened tenant protections in recent years because state law is insufficient to keep folks in their homes. The Tenant Protection Act provides some baseline protections, but does not cover all units, allows rent increases up to ten percent, and lacks important eviction protections. Twenty-one California jurisdictions have adopted rent laws since 2016, with local examples including unincorporated LA County, Culver City, Inglewood, Bell Gardens, and Huntington Park, which have or are implementing strong rent stabilization ordinances. The model ordinance shared by BTU in April would keep Burbank renters housed and is legally sound and constitutional. The ordinance would protect vulnerable tenants while ensuring landlords a fair rate of return, a proper legislative purpose with provisions furthering that purpose. It would not violate the takings clause nor the due process clause of the US or California constitutions. It is based on existing RSOs from jurisdictions around LA County and the state, none of which have been deemed unconstitutional. The tenant protections that city staff have been looking into and that BTU have been advocating for are legal, effective measures for keeping roofs over folks' heads. Measures like a sustainable rent cap, a rent registry, universal just cause, closing the rent eviction loophole, strong protections against harassment and retaliations, and making relocation assistance equal to market rate rather than current rent have precedent around the state, drawing no legal challenge or withstanding any level against them. Local jurisdictions have wide discretion in crafting legislation to protect residents, and the City of Burbank can and should use that discretion to enact meaningful policies that will keep people in their homes. The majority of Burbank residents are renters, and the majority of those renters are rent-burdened. With people being priced out of their homes, facing harassment, and being unjustly evicted every day, I urge City Council to take strong and decisive action to adopt strong rent protections and to keep the residents of Burbank safe and housed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Kate Kundoff, followed by Madame Queen.
Congratulations, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, and welcome, Councilmember Rosati. On July 16th, City Council instructed city staff to look into the following and report back at the quote "earliest feasible timeline." A tenant bill of rights modeled on other cities that included anti-harassment language, enacting universal just cause for all no-fault evictions, and universal application of other tenant protections, and exploring a narrowing of mom-and-pop exemptions, closing the rent eviction loophole, and adding an extra month of relocation assistance for qualified tenants, including families with minor children, seniors, and people with disability. BTU constantly is being contacted by tenants getting displaced through no fault of their own, many of whom are families in single-family homes, which mean they are being displaced with no relocation assistance. Several of them are currently being displaced and have gotten sixty-day notices right before the holidays. So I ask council, what is this earliest feasible timeline? BTU has been asking for these protections for almost two years, and half a year ago, the City Council instructed staff to look into this. Is there a date that these protections will be agendized? And if not, will council instruct it to be agendized at the end of the night? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Madame Queen, followed by John Denzmore.
Oh, thank you, and I'll have to get up. Oh, thank you. Good day, esteemed council members, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor. I'm going to speak fast because I was counting on three minutes, and I wrote it out this time, but it's definitely going to be more. So I'm talking about Ralphs. Ralphs is a subsidiary, subsidiary, as you know, of the Kroger family. They processed an unauthorized charge to a customer's credit card through a store phone app after it was updated, as was required, to make a digital purchase of avocados. And this happened on July 15, 2024. The customer servants, agents at Kroger attempted to require the customer to give them the first six digits of the credit card and confirm the last four digits of the credit card that was never presented to the cashier in the original transaction, nor had it ever been used at the store. I don't know why that's going off. I turned the phone off. Kroger agents attempted to frustrate the customer, who they were made aware was dealing with multiple disabling conditions. Oh, this is embarrassing. I turned the phone off with the other ones in air conditioning. Okay. I have 33 seconds left, and so what I want to say is, you have to watch your receipts, and something needs to be done. I reported this to the police department. I ended up having to cancel my credit card. They are using apps and trying to give you a store credit for your credit card. Now, this could lead to, and I'm coming back on January the 14th, because this leads to a lot of unearned income in the billions, because they have over 11 million customers. Thank you.
Thank you, Madame. That's your time, and you have a lovely ringtone. Our next speaker is John Densmore, followed by Robbie Brody.
Hello, everybody. My name is John Densmore, new resident of Burbank, about a year and a half in. And as you know with the homes here, my home was made 1950, needs a lot of updates. So I have an architect and got the initial plan review in, paid the money for the initial plan review, and I got some revisions back. And I am now at, they're now asking me to pay $650 to submit this minor setback exemption. So I've reached out to the Planning Commission, and they've been on break. I tried to go, we tried to go with my son, tried to go to the meeting. They've canceled the meeting since, October is the last time they met. So I reached out to the city clerk, got passed on to some of the Planning Division people, and the consensus was that I have to pay this fee because it was, it was adopted under the City Council. So now I'm under, asking you guys if there's an issue with maybe I can get this fee waived, because it feels like it's more like a nickel and diming situation. I've already paid the initial plan review of $2,837. So with this minor exemption setback, I'm now having to pay an extra $655. So I'm just asking, how can I get this fee waived? Who can I talk to? Just get some better information. And I guess, yeah, this is not, obviously not back and forth, but if our city clerk call, ask again somehow, that's what I like to do. And I guess the next thing is, these are older homes, obviously being done, that need upgrades. Electric needs to be upgraded in all these homes. We've had recent fires. There's no ground wire in our house, so a lot of our neighbors are having little fires in their homes. So it's a bigger issue, I think, with the community. So just something to think about with the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We do have staff here from CDD who might want to speak to you, so sit tight.
That'd be great. Appreciate that.
Our next speaker is Robbie Brody.
Hello, Council. I'm so proud to be here on the first night of the reconstituted council. I apologize. It was ugly sweater day at my courthouse, especially with Commissioner Rizzati. You always look like a million dollars. I'm here as your Parks and Rec Commissioner, the eyes and ears of Council and our city. I want to give a quick shout-out and echo our prior speaker about number seven, the Eze Project. It's going to be awesome, and I can't wait till the five of you are there with the giant scissors to cut that ribbon. That's my park, and I raise my kids in that park. There's going to be something there for, no matter what age you are, your kid and your dad, Commissioner, are going to have something new to do at that park. It's going to be unbelievable. But I'm really here to speak just for a moment on number nine. As a new Parks and Rec Commissioner, getting thrown into the MND for the trees has been very sobering. And I'll tell you, my issue with this city is safety first. This is my third board. I was all about safety on art in public places, art that's safe to climb on, to be around. Burbank Water and Power, my next board, that Commissioner Mullins caught me on, swore me in on. Of course, they're all about safety. Now, on Parks and Rec, I have walked those streets. The trees are not safe. The ones that we earmarked, we, we are not rubber stampers on our committee. I want to assure you, I have done the work. We need to adopt that to keep our residents safe, to keep our city safe. And I wish I could turn back time and fix them 25 years ago, but we've got to work with what we have now, and I want our residents to be safe. So I'm urging the Council to adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Now we will move on to the calls. Madam City Clerk, do we have any callers?
The first call is Jamie Hall.
Hi, Jamie. You're on with City Council. You have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Hall. I'm a layman, environmental attorney with Channel Log Group. I'm here representing guardians of the public side with regard to the Level Science Human Milk replacement project. We submitted a letter today. It was 451 pages with three expert reports, including a certified arborist, a former urban forester, as well as two other environmental professionals. And they have also included that the mitigated negative debt where it is prepared for the project is fatally flawed. We have presented a fair argument supported by substantial evidence that the project may have significant effects on the environment. As such, the city must prepare an environmental impact support for the project. It cannot proceed with an M and D. And some of the basic things here, the basic laws the city made with regard to the M and D is number one, failing to conduct the analysis analysis and wrongly concluding that the short-term and midterm effects of the loss of tenants will not have a significant effect on the environment. Further, there is a significant loss of shade. And one of the consequences of the loss of shade is the creation of what's called an urban heat island effect. Kind of shocking in some ways, the city stated that there's no evidence of localized increases in air pressures as a result of the removal of trees. First of all, that's just ludicrous. Any person that has to be in the environment, that, that actually knows that that's correct. But we submitted declarations from multiple residents who have already experienced the urban heat island effect as a result of the removal of 40 some odd trees on the hair curbs previous. So you have to comply with people in order to approve this project, and you cannot proceed with an M and D as the environmental clearance document. My client will proceed to challenge the city in court as it is typically when it starts to begin no environmental order to be questioned. Please do the right thing.
Thank you for your comment and your call. And just a reminder to folks who are calling, please make sure to take your phone off speaker, speak into the phone clearly, and turn off any other surrounding noise so we can hear you clearly.
The next caller is Gary Brick.
Hi, Former Mayor Brick. You're on with City Council. You have two minutes.
All right. Well, thank you very much, and happy holidays and Merry Christmas to everybody. First off, I'd like to congratulate Mayor Perez and Vice Mayor Takahashi and newly-elected Councilman Christopher Rizzati. Welcome to the dais, and you're going to have four great years ahead of you. Two items that I'd like to, the first one is about our traffic signals. I know we're doing a lot for make about them now, but I'm well aware about transportation commissions. Back in the day in 2007, 2011, I was on the traffic and transportation commission. I would like our traffic engineers to, excuse me, consider changing the time delays to three seconds like that we go. Many times coming down the hill and stopping the air birds, it might change immediately and don't pull out as far as you're trying to rush through the intersection. Not just the perspective that we need, but so I appreciate that would be considered. And secondly, I think Council should consider not using their phones to text if they're at meeting, as they don't do between each other like I've seen in the past. I could be wrong, but that's the direction I get. When I was back on Council, I gave my wife a blast cell number. If there was an issue with the rent, he would, he would call him and he'd pass hand notes, and if I needed to get hold of him. So anyway, I wish you'd consider that. I believe you probably still have the first step, second step, and if you do, maybe consider that. And finally, of course, I have to say something to my friend, Aunt Jeanine Anthony, but maybe for 30% I'd get you a couple ties and a couple sport coats.
Thank you, Mr. Brick. That's your time. Thank you for your comment, and happy holidays. Before we move on, can we get a sound check? Because it sounds like it's, it's coming from us.
If I could, BWP Communications staff is here. They're, they're working on it right now, so we apologize for, for that. We're, we're trying to fix it in real time here.
Madam Mayor, if I may request from Former Mayor Brick to send us an email with what he had mentioned, because I honestly did not understand a lot of everything he said. So I hope-
It was a couple of ties and sport coats for Councilmember Anthony.
Well, that's for Councilmember Anthony. You know, I-
Santa bring, costing Anthony.
I got that one. That was, that was loud and clear, and I second the motion, but-
Yes, we, we heard that part loud and clear. But Mr. Brick, if you're still listening, we would love to get the rest of the items you, you asked and inquired about via email, because it was a little spotty to hear. Not your fault. Some technical difficulties on our end. All right, we have three more callers on the line. Do we have an update on how's that's going?
You can take a break if you'd like.
Let's take a moment to pause, because I'd love to hear the other three callers, and it looks like the sound is just getting worse and worse. Let's take a five-minute recess. Let's take a five minute recess.
Testing one dot six six. Hello? Oh, you can hear me? Testing, one, two, three? Testing, testing? You can hear me? Okay. Sounds clear? Okay. Testing, one, two, three? Testing, is it clear? One, two, three? Testing one, two, three? Testing, does it sound clear? Yep. Perfect. Thank you.
Alrighty, welcome back. Welcome back, everybody, and thank you for, thank you for handling here with us during these technical difficulties. It looks like we have everything back and running again and we will proceed with the remainder of our calls.
The next caller is Caleb.
Caleb, you're on with City Council. You have two minutes.
I wanted to ask Mr. Rosati to turn his chairs to give the price tag on council seats. The ordinance on contribution limits and election interference desperately needs review, but it will be biased because you directly benefited. Yesterday, spent time in caregiving council members on off topic items, serving brick office workers is probably what your donors gave you, but that was not for Burbank residents. When I reached out to you during the campaign, you were recommending initiatives on issues and the history of municipal cops for Burbank residents and we think it gives you all who don't need review is unacceptable. I formally request your pardon to council member Anthony from going to your campaign along with voting, something no other candidates engaged in. They were all focused on revenue. I also care about the environment and like to return this damn propaganda you sold myself on this fall. In response to my struggle to align that specifically set, in quotes, motor vehicles are the main source of transportation. People are not concerned at getting their haircut, going to the bank, on a bike or bus. Well, here I am. How do you think I do all these things? You add, "At the moment, we need to keep our roads open as the right shows up. Look at our traffic. This is certainly a lot. So you know, bikes are so much privilege than you, taking nothing from you. I have to learn today. If you're not realizing that, do not keep them happening, can you imagine? One of your campaign photos was smiling at a bus stop by struggle and practice for a while. Thank you."
Thank you for your comment.
The next caller is David Watley.
Hi, David. Hi, David, you're on with City Council. You have two minutes.
Great, thank you so much. Good evening, Burbank City Council. My name is David Watley and I just want to start off by saying that, um, it's an honor and privilege to participate in the meeting this evening via telephone. I should have been participating in the Burbank City Council meeting earlier this year via telephone and I advocated in support of veteran housing and it was on the same day that, uh, the city of Burbank issued a proclamation in honor of the Lord Sparta. And, um, I recall, I really loved those words that were spoken, um, by various Burbank City Council members at that meeting, including the new current mayor of Burbank. So I would like to say congratulations to the new, uh, current mayor of Burbank and I looked at your bio and see that you're, uh, an alum of UCLA, as am I, so go Bruins. And so I'm, I'm, I'm calling to receive me because I left a le- a copy of a letter earlier today at City, Burbank City Hall with Sandy, the assistant for the city council. And the, uh, the letter is dated today, December seventeen point three four. I just sent it to mail earlier today to the White House and it's asking for support from the president, um, with regard to, it's called the U.S. Conference of Mayors and, um, they, uh, the, their, their website is usmayors.org and they, there's a lot of healthy issues that the U.S. Conference of Mayors is working on. And I advocated my letter to the president, uh, support for their work with regard to, uh, mental health and also with regard to immigration. So I would be honored if the Burbank City Council would consider supporting my advocacy with regard to my letter that the city did to the president, beginning to the U.S. Conference of Mayors and their, um, what they work on specifically, I, I highlighted the issues of immigration and mental health. And with that, thank you so much and congratulations again to the new mayor of Burbank.
Thank you for your call, David, and go Bruins.
The next caller would like to remain anonymous.
Hi, you're on with City Council. You have two minutes.
Hi, I would like council to stay committed to the stronger tenant protection that we're looking into before the council seat change. Since our new council member strongly expressed on many flyers sent to residents of his belief that housing is a human right, which is also BTU's core belief as well, I urge the council to stay committed to enact these stronger protections for this renter majority cities who are extremely rent burdened. Please help keep the people of Burbank calm since every $100 rent increase in an area's median rent is associated with a 9% increase in the rate of homelessness according, according to a report by the U.S. Government Accountability Office. I urge council to continue looking into the 3% to 4% rent, rent cap that it directed staff to look into back in October, so please give us a date for when this will be on the agenda again in this year. People urgently need a lower rent cap as more neighbors are being displaced even during the holiday season. The displacement has had devastating impact on our friends who have the force to lead their community. Please also look into closing the rent eviction loophole which causes a lot of mental health disturbance here in Burbank and create a rental registry so more housing data can be available to create greater enforcement on landlords who are abusing loopholes and harming families in Burbank. Thank you.
Thank you for your call.
That was our last caller.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. That being our last caller, I now declare the general public comment period closed. To our folks who called, we're so sorry for the technical difficulties. It was a little hard to hear you. We got the gist of it. To our first caller, we heard you. We know it was on an agenda item. Everybody else, that sounds like non-agenda items, so if you'd like to reach out to us via email and share your thoughts so that we can get them fully and clearly, we would really appreciate that. Um, thank you for calling. Again, sorry for the technical difficulties. Now is the time for a brief response from City Council, the city manager and/or the city attorney. Who would like to begin? Mr. City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just a couple of, uh, follow-ups. Uh, first, Mr. Dunsmore, uh, uh, Community Development Staff did follow-up, uh, with him, so, um, uh, that, that's, I think, taken care of. And then, uh, for Ms. Santos, uh, first of all, our condolences, uh, on her loss. Um, the police department is aware of the case and is actively, uh, working on the investigation and has been in contact with, uh, Ms. Santos and the family. So I don't know if that's, uh, I know the police chief really doesn't want to get into much more cause it is an active investigation.
Mr. City Attorney.
Uh, Madam Mayor, there were several speakers that, uh, had comments about the tenant protections and, um, uh, the, uh, rent controls, uh, hard cap, soft cap issues. Those are coming back. Last week, I said January, uh, I believe that there's a date in February that staff's gonna bring back, uh, uh, the first report, uh, on, uh, a number of items, the, starting first with the items from July and then, uh, into probably March or April and as far as June, uh, depending upon, um, uh, budget consequences for some of the items. So we'll be bringing back a report in, in, uh, February, uh, to start delivering on those items.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Um, any other comments from, great, Councilmember Anthony?
Uh, yeah, I'll, uh, thank you, everyone, uh, for coming down and, um, and for calling in. Normally, it's great. Um, uh, I just wanted to address one quick thing. Uh, there was a caller who came in, uh, questioning, um, some of the, um, uh, results and possible outcomes of the recent election. I wa- I wanna assure you, every single candidate in this race, uh, this year, their financials are public, they are scrutinized, um, they are documented, our city clerk goes through them, uh, every single dollar that was raised and that was spent is publicly available. Uh, you can see all of that. There's nothing untoward, there was nothing illegal happening. The results are the results. I wanna assure you that I have seen, uh, Mr. Rosati out in the community. He has deep ties to the community. He's been here very long time, has served on many boards and commissions, and he walked and walked. So please do not, uh, call in and try to, uh, uh, give doubt or, or, um, any sort of, uh, asp- aspersions, uh, to, uh, the election. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Anthony. Um, Councilmember Rosati.
Thank you for that. Uh, thank you for everyone that come down. Um, I just wanna say to Ms. Santos, I, I know it took a lot for you to come here and tell your story. Um, it, it, that is a heartbreaking story. Um, knowing our department, uh, they will not stop and if, if, if this can be solved, they will, they will do their very best. Um, I know they take a lot of pride in what they do, um, and I am certain that if, if they can do it, uh, they will. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Um, Vice Mayor Takahashi.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I thank you for all who came tonight to speak and share your thoughts on the various topics, um, the emails and the calls, um, and the meetings. Thank you so much. A few things, wanted to just highlight, um, let's see, uh, Mr. Van Gorder, thank you for sharing the information about housing. Are you still here? If you, if you're not, okay, well, I'm sure he's watching it later, so please send that Harvard, uh, report to me. I'd love to see it. Please. And then, Mr. De Leon. What? What, what? So excited that you spoke tonight. Thank you so much for introducing yourself and I'm so glad to have you here, um, as one of our regulars. And glad to hear that you liked the George Asay Park Plan. Uh, Mr. Scroggs, thank you for continuing to update us on the entertainment industry. I'm looking forward, we have some conversations that we have looking forward, so I'm looking forward to that. Um, Mr. Donahue had a couple of questions about ADUs. Did we get a chance to answer his questions?
I believe Community Development Staff is following up with him.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hawk's not here, I saw him leave, but I want to just say, if you're watching, Mr. Hawk, that I will be there on Saturday with my family to the Free Community Band Concert. It's so much fun, um, and so I encourage the entire community to go. They, the Community Band is a bunch, is a group of volunteers who play with their full hearts and it's just, it's just a blast, so I hope that y'all can go. And let's see, um, there's one more. Oh, yes, and, uh, the caller, I think his name was David, if I caught it, um, said that there was a copy of a letter to, um, our admin. Um, I'll make sure we get that letter. I, I did not see it yet, but I'll make sure that we get that letter. Thank you.
Councilmember Mullins.
Thank you. Um, well, everyone else addressed everybody in the room, so thank you all. Um, same, uh, token goes for Mr. Mrs. Ms. Santos, um, my deepest condolences for what happened to your sister and like Councilmember Rosati said, we're very proud of our police department, so continue working with them and, uh, we're hoping for, um, a good solution for, um, the end of the tragedy what happened, so thank you. Uh, very proud of Mr. De Leon. I am extremely impressed that you got up and spoke. I wondered often if you're ever gonna address the council, so this is a pleasant surprise at the last meeting here for December, so before we take our break, so thank you for speaking. Um, everyone else, the, the, you know, it, all the answers, uh, staff answered and it was addressed by the city attorney, by the city manager. I do have one question regarding Madam Queen, um, this whole Ralph situation. I'm not quite sure what's going on. Um, you kind of lost me somewhere in the middle because I know you didn't give your full speech, so I don't know how to address the concern or issue. I don't know if we can even address the concern issue because it's a private business and I'm not quite sure what was happening, so if you can, send us an email or, I don't know if we have any authority over them, but I wanted to address you and acknowledge that you did speak and, um, that I, I'm interested to hear what really happened, so if you wanna send us an email, I'm happy to, to read it and see if we can do anything. Okay? Oh, okay. So I, thank you. Um, so alerting the public, so thank you. I'm gonna be on the lookout when I go. Thank you. All right. That's it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Mullins, and I'll share my comments and be brief. We can't have a back and forth with anybody in the community, but, but thank you all for coming and commenting. I'm gonna apologize a third time for the technical difficulties. Had to happen in our last meeting of the year. Um, and I will start by saying thank you to the Community Band folks, thank you to Eric for coming. That concert is 5:00 PM on, when was it? Saturday, this Saturday. Yeah, we will be there. All right, um, you scared me a little bit because when you said it was your last presentation, I thought, you thought you were leaving. You left us on a, on a cliffhanger there, but glad you'll be back next year to share more with us. Um, thank you to Mr. Scroggs. You're always here to remind us about the entertainment industry and I'm, I'm glad you're highlighting the very important point that we have a lot of our entertainment industry leaving. We have a lot of production happening in other states. It's a reminder to us to work to keep the media industry here and to make sure we're law-
lobbying our state and federal partners to keep our media industry here. Adrian, longtime listener, first-time caller? Thank you for speaking up. We've enjoyed having you here at the council meetings. Fellow Burrows Dance Team member over here? Thanks for that, and we're excited that you're excited about the Isaiah Park space, and yes, I would love to see Burrows dancing there. They're amazing. Let's see. David, the caller who shared about the U.S. Conference of Mayors. I caught bits and pieces of that. I know the letter you're talking about sitting on my desk, and I look forward to reading it and meeting with you to hearing more about the Conference of Mayors and how we can work together there. And finally, Ms. Santos. Thank you for coming and sharing that with us. Like my colleagues mentioned, it must be very difficult to talk about this and reopen wounds. I will definitely take a look at what you shared with us today at a later time. Happy to talk about it, and I know it's an active investigation, so I won't go too far, but I do want to say we hear you, and I look forward to our Burbank Police Department continuing to work with you and getting to the bottom of this. I'm so sorry for your loss. I cannot imagine what it must feel like. Thank you for your bravery. All righty. That being all of our responses to public comment, we will now move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have eight items on the consent calendar tonight. Item one is approval of the City Council minutes of the joint meeting of December 10, 2024. Item two is adoption of an ordinance amending the zoning map and the Burbank Municipal Code to create a new 2021-2029 housing element, opportunity sites overlay zone to implement required 2021-2029 housing element programs pursuant to state law. Item three is adoption of an ordinance to amend the streamlined ministerial review process for development projects subject to streamlined ministerial review when required by state law, including Government Code Section 65913.4 (SB 35) and 65912.100 (AB 2011). Item four is adoption of a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute a design-build contract with Landscape Structures Incorporated and delegating authority to approve plans and specifications for shade structures at George Isaiah Park Ballfields. Item five is adoption of a resolution approving tract map number 83627 and related subdivision improvement agreement for 921 West Riverside Drive. Item six is review of development impact fee funds as of June 30, 2024. Item seven is approval of Phase Two of the George Isaiah Park Master Plan. And item eight is approval of the Police Department's acquisition of additional military equipment and request to apply for grant funding to replace existing military equipment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I make a motion to move the consent calendar as it's stated.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mullins, second by Takahashi. Let's vote.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes on 1 through 7, no on 8.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Yes.
And Mayor Perez?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Motion passes 5 to 1, noting the no on item 8 from Councilmember Anthony. Let's see. We have one report to counsel this evening. After the staff's presentation, the City Council will proceed with in-person public comment only. Speakers will be allowed to speak on the item at the conclusion of the presentation as long as the speaker has not spoken on this item during the first period of general public comment. Please be sure to submit your comment cards now, as no additional cards will be accepted once the public comment period begins following right after staff's presentation. Ms. Marissa Garcia, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, council members, and a special welcome to new Councilmember Rosati. I'm Marissa Garcia, Parks and Recreation Director. Staff is before you this evening to present a report on the Aleppo pine tree removal and replacement project. I do have a PowerPoint presentation for you this evening. This evening's presentation will begin with a brief background on the city's urban forest. I will provide a background on the project and share an update on the removal and replacement of these pine trees and provide an overview of the environmental review process. The city of Burbank is one of two cities with the longest designation as a Tree City USA. We proudly share this title with the city of Sacramento. The city is committed to preserving the over 33... 30... I'm sorry, 30,000 trees in our urban forest through ongoing care and investment led by the Parks and Recreation Department. Our certified arborists within the Forestry Division of our department regularly assess, prune, and when necessary, will remove trees while prioritizing replacement to maintain and expand our urban canopy. The department ensures that strategic planting of trees with attention to growth rate, disease resistance, and drought tolerance. For a number of years, the city has experienced issues with Aleppo pine trees citywide, including numerous failures. Most recently, in February of 2023, two Aleppo pine trees failed during a severe rain and windstorm. Here are a couple of images of that event. Here are a couple more images illustrating what occurred in February of '23. Following that storm in the spring of '23, the city's arbor culture experts assessed 121 Aleppo pine trees and one Italian stone pine and determined that these trees had likely reached their maturity and were at risk of failure. Additionally, the city hired an independent ISA-certified arborist, which confirmed the city's expert assessment and presented a phased removal plan of these high-risk trees. The city's replacement plan for the phased removal of the high-risk trees includes planting more trees than are removed with as large of a tree as a location can accommodate to enhance the urban canopy. The department engaged the public through mailed notices, meetings, and online resources. This included door hangers, letters that were mailed to residents on these blocks with impacted trees, and presentations were made to the Parks and Recreation Board, Sustainable Burbank Commission, as well as a informational community meeting. I would like to also mention that the city has had independent certified arborists do risk assessment of these trees three separate times. Most recently, that was done in October of 2024. Between October of 2023 and May of 2024, approximately 50 of these previously assessed trees have been removed on an emergency basis due to the imminent danger they pose to the residential areas in which they are located. And one of these Aleppo pine trees fell during a windy condition on March 14, 2024, and that tree was removed. And here are some images of that tree that fell in March earlier this year. The home was occupied when that tree fell. However, we're glad that nobody was hurt. As of today, of the 50 trees that have been removed, 98 trees have been planted, guaranteeing a net increase of trees. Residents were given the opportunity to select the replacement tree. So the 50 trees that were removed, those residents were given the opportunity to select the tree species per the city's street tree master plan. The replacement trees, those 50 trees, were 48-inch box-sized trees. Depending on the tree species, they're roughly 16 to 20 feet tall. The new trees, so we planted new trees in vacant parkways, were 36-inch box trees. Again, depending on the species, could be anywhere from 12 to 16 feet tall. Additionally, slow-release watering bags were offered to anyone who wanted these bags. The trees, regardless of the size, and these watering bags, were all paid by the city and were free to our residents. Of the newly planted trees, most are alive and thriving. There are some trees that are dormant, so they might look, you know, like they're dead. But there are some trees that are dead. I will say that we have inspected and will continue to inspect these trees. Approximately 5% of the 98 trees have died. Most appear to have died due to a lack of watering by the property owner, the tenant. The city will be replacing those trees, and again, we will continue to be monitoring these trees on a quarterly basis. Additionally, we will continue educating our residents of their responsibility per the Burbank Municipal Code, of their responsibility to water these trees, as well as to continue to make these slow-release watering bags available to them should they wish to take them. And over the next few slides, I will share photos of some of these replacement trees. These pictures were taken last week on December 11. These trees are... The first tree on the left is on... The address is 3003 Olive, but it's on the side, so it's on Niagara. And the tree on the right is at 129 North Niagara. The next tree, the one on the left, is a 700 block of North Niagara, and the one on the right, it's a 400 block of North Niagara. These trees left is 200, specifically to 46 North Niagara. The one on the right is 734 North Niagara. And then, again, I mentioned that these trees are citywide. The tree on the left is on Santa Anita, 1023, and the one on the right is 1613 North Niagara. So pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as CEQA, in late 2023, the city retained the services of DUDAC to prepare an initial study to analyze the potential environmental impacts of the Aleppo pine tree removal and replacement project. The initial study thoroughly analyzed a proposed removal and replacement of the remaining Aleppo pine trees that have been found to be at risk of failing, in addition to those that have already been removed or the one that fell. So we're looking at all of 122 trees. The initial study determined the proposed project would not have any potentially significant environmental impacts that cannot be mitigated to below the level of significance. The initial study determined a potentially significant impact could result if any of the trees were removed or there was maintenance that was done during the general bird nesting season, which runs from February 1 through August 31. However, with the implementation of mitigation measure Bio-1, which is how it's referred to in the document, which requires bird nesting surveys prior to any work, removal, or maintenance of any tree during this nesting season, the impact would be reduced to a level less than Consistent with CEQA guidelines, the city prepared a draft mitigated negative declaration, also just referred to as an MND, that was published for public review on June 1 of this year. Although the minimum public review period is 30 days, the public review period for the draft MND for this project was 45 days. The city wanted to ensure that the Burbank community had sufficient time to review and provide comments on this important project. The community was notified through various means, and this extensive document was made available at all Burbank public libraries. A copy was also at the city clerk's office and was available via the city's dedicated webpage. Mailers to residents living on blocks with Aleppo pine trees received a notification of this MND review period. Emails were also sent through the city's e-notification system. An ad was placed in the Los Angeles Times on June 12, 2024. Announcements were made at the City Council meeting on June 25, 2024, at the Parks and Recreation Board meeting on June 25, 2024, and email notifications to our Parks and Recreation Board and Burbank Sustainable Commission were also sent. The city received 45 written comments on the draft MND during this review process period, which concluded on July 15. All comments were reviewed and incorporated into Appendix F of the final MND. Additionally, the city provided written responses to all comments. Those comments that were provided... The comments that were received that were pertinent to the environmental document, the draft MND, were considered as the final MND was... documents being finalized. So now, the final MND, taking into consideration all of the comments received, determined that the Aleppo pine tree removal and replacement project would result in less than significant impacts to the environment, including, but not limited to, aesthetics, air quality, energy use, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, with no mitigation measures required. It did, as I mentioned earlier, there was that potential of the bird nesting season. Therefore, a mitigation monitoring and reporting program has been prepared to monitor the implementation of mitigation measure Bio-1, requiring bird nesting surveys prior to the removal or maintenance of any trees during that general bird nesting season. The Aleppo pine tree removal and replacement project aims to sustain and enhance the city's tree canopy with resilient, well-adapted replacement trees to provide long-term environmental and community benefits. Following the release of the draft MND, the remaining trees, approximately the 70 trees, were independently assessed, and a phased removal plan was established based on the risk of failure. The plan is substantially consistent with a multi-year phased approach described in the MND and does not change any of the analysis or conclusions reached in the MND. The plan calls for the removal and replacement of the remaining trees over the next five years based on the risk of failure. I would like to point out that staff's recommendation in the staff report recommends that the council adopt a mitigated negative declaration, adopt a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approve the Aleppo pine tree removal and replacement project. However, based on the significant quantity of reference material that was received late this afternoon, as was noted by the first caller this evening, although staff and our consultants have begun to review that material, we have not had time to sufficiently review that information. We would like to do our due diligence and review that information before making a formal recommendation to council. Therefore, our recommendation is to come back in early 2025 to present a more well-informed to present a more well-informed recommendation to council. That concludes my report. Following public comment staff, we have also representatives from DUDAC and would be available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia, for the report. All right, at this time, it is now the time for public comment on this agenda item. We have five public comment cards, so you each get three minutes to speak. And I will start us off now. Our first speaker is Diane McKinnon, followed by James McKinnon.
Well, here we are again, hey? You're new to this, you'll get used to it. The rest know me. I would just like you to know that the residents and our legal team were actually only given the final MND on Thursday at eight P M. So the fact that you have over four hundred pages from us that happened over the weekend from our scientists and environmentalists is a pretty big feat for us. And I think that after all of our emails that have been sent to you, we probably didn't have your email, I apologize. I will forward them all to you, it's going to be great. This has been a great decision that we finally see eye to eye on, even though she'll never look at me. I just wanted you to know that everything that they said, that they were giving us like forty-five days, and we got to pick our trees, and the trees are bigger, and all of these things are things that actually we had to fight for in court and were given to us because we made that happen. They were not given to us, we fought for that, which is horrible. It's disgusting that this city has come to a point where we actually have to, it's like you have to beat us and win against us. We are the residents. We are the residents here, you guys, you, you, all of you are here being paid exorbitant amounts of money, by the way, more than the state senator, more than the President of the United States. For a city of a hundred thousand people, that's our tax dollars, and you are being paid that to listen to us. This room was created and invented to hear us speak so that you can take what we have to say and consider us and how we are affected and how we live in this city, and how your decisions affect us, and that you are supposed to come together with us to make these decisions, and that is what we have asked for, for a year and a half. We have asked to be heard, we have asked to be a part of the process, and we have had nothing but been dictated to. When Ms. Garcia talks about having a, a public forum, no, you didn't. We had to beg for that, and it wasn't until after we had a lawyer and after we won in court the injunction and after that fact, that you sat in a room in a library and tried to, it tried to have the Brown Act happen in a library and then called the police on us when we decided that we had things to say, and you refused to comment back and have a back and forth with us. Everything that was given to us, and by the way, it's over twenty percent of those trees that are dead. We have photos that we've sent you and the emails you received today are, they're dead. There are residents who have literally, the trees have like fallen over, they're dead. They are not dormant, they are dead. We work in film and TV, we had to leave for months at a time in the summer. Who's watering that? I didn't buy a house and say I wanted to water, I didn't sign an agreement, say I was, I was going to water. Plus, you always also said, two times a week we can water.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment, that's your time. Our next speaker is James McKinnon, followed by Quana Campbell. Sorry if I mispronounced that.
Super, super disappointed in this whole thing, and, and you guys know, thank God the kid's gone because I cuss. It's really, really, really disgusting. Thank God this woman finally, it's only because of what we write and come to you guys with, they don't make any decisions. You guys could have money for that park if you weren't in so many litigations. You guys could not, not ask us for money, you could actually have your own money in there. I just want to say that, I want it on record that the Bertoli and our tree that has been cut down, and you would think we'd be less active in this because our tree's gone, our completely straight tree, Bertoli's completely straight tree, along with seven fucking police officers at our house to make sure that this little hundred-pound woman's not going to get in their way. You wasted seven, seven police officers for nine and a half hours to sit at our house because she said, don't cut down our tree. Fucking sad. What? With the nest in it. And I'm just going to send you guys the video of your person that you sent up there to look at it and go, it's not an active nest in the wrong timeframe, I think. And you just said something about that you pre-sent somebody out. You actually didn't. So we had an active nest in our thing, put it up there, police talked to somebody on the phone, said, cut it down anyways. And then they took a bulldozer, after you see the things in the tree fall on the ground, they immediately took a fucking bulldozer and put it over there so we couldn't see it. Great job. Live birds, great fucking job. But guess what? Sue us back, because, and, and, oh, I want to quickly, oh, I have a minute and nineteen seconds. If you look at our straight tree, which magically has to be the first one to get cut down, Bertoli's get to cut down, that's so weird. It's the people that are actually here fighting. You actually vindictively cut our tree down. Because if you walk on our street, there's like nine trees that we've always said from day one need to come down. Those trees are still up, and you know what, those trees are like fucking spaghetti, and they're still up. Our completely straight tree was cut down. We have a picture of the base, completely fresh. There's trees like this going on a house, there's one, just two doors from the house. It goes on a house, a street, and would take out cars, still up. And this man right here is supposed to be the boss of all that? If those trees fall, you've cut down good trees, you left up bad trees. I just want to let everybody know, if some trees fall after that, that thing, there's going to be some type, I don't even know what's going to happen, but if you purposely left up trees to actually fall when it rains next year, because you cut all the good ones down and you left shitty ones up.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment and happy holidays. Our next speaker is Quana Campbell, followed by Jason Everly.
Greetings to you all. I'm here to talk also about the aleppo pines. For me, again, as I said in other meetings, it's a very spiritual matter. I think that some of you understand a little bit more than others here about the connection that we have with these beings that are on the earth. I actually looked at the tree rings on two of the trees that were cut where I live. These trees are supposed to live about a hundred and fifty years. One tree ring count was about seventy-five, the other was about eighty-two. So I know they were not at the end of their life expectancy, and they were, they were healthy. But the city insisted on, you know, cutting them down. The issue with the bird nest, yes, we have a red-tailed hawk that usually would visit quite often, doesn't come around anymore. When they're not there, and of course, the rats and the other vermin increase. We have squirrels coming out of our ears. There is a balance that has been interrupted because our elders, which are these trees, are now gone. And I just want to ask again, I know Marissa's trying, but I believe she's being given information that's a little bit twisted in favor of going ahead with the project. And I understand that we need to have safety for the citizens, of course. But at Thanksgiving, they spare turkeys. I would think maybe for Christmas, we could spare some trees, that would be nice. You could publicize that and say, hey, everybody, we're setting these trees free for life. That's all I want to say, I, I pray for the blessing on all of you, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Jason Everly, followed by Vicky Kirshenbaum.
How's it going? Yeah, I've been here, learned about city council meetings more than I ever really kind of wanted to. I appreciate the city, I love the city, I'll do almost anything for the city. If Glendale invades, I'll be right there to, to duke it out. But I got a letter in the mail, which I just about threw away from Marissa's office that said, oh, P S, we're cutting your trees down in two weeks. And this is a shock. I've lived there seventeen years, know all my neighbors, grew up with everybody in Burbank. My mom lives on Niagara, we own a couple of properties there with good friends. And the, the trees are magnificent on Niagara, you all know that. You all have been down there, you're all over lifelong Burbank residents, you know all about where the really, really nice trees are. And you know all about the residents that don't have a lot of trees. So those that do, it's much valued. And our trees are really big and beautiful and strong and all the rest of it. Nobody wants a tree to fall on their house. Nobody is here bitching and moaning at city council meetings when they could be home with their families because they think a tree's going to fall on them and just want to make a stand. I have a magnificent aleppo tree in my front yard, it's the reason I got a letter. My neighbor didn't, neighbor across the street didn't. We all got together as neighbors and we're like, did anybody see this? This is a shocker. What do we do? Who do we talk to? At every turn, it was what I learned, all about the administration of Burbank, it's, it's horrible. I mean, I'm not coming to your house, you're coming to my house to cut my tree down. It's just kind of, it's pretty much in my face. It's a beautiful tree. You know the Christmas house list in Burbank that, I'm sure you all have been on the tour, I'm on that tour. My aleppo tree is all decked out in, in lights. You'll come by and see a gigantic Santa Claus in the seven hundred block of Niagara, that's me. And you'll see the aleppo pine is doing, it's a magnificent tree, you know, we are lucky to have it. But the way this has been handled, it, it's been brutal for us. You know, two weeks' notice, your tree's getting cut down, if someone's coming to your yard to do this is, is horrible. Diane has been fighting the good fight, and it's been very tough, and it gets passionate, but it's our front yard. It's our street, it's beautiful. We're going to fight for it, you would fight for it. So you are, you are the citizens of Burbank, you are our only voice, aside from us yelling here. Be that voice, don't, you're trying to, I know the city attorney wants to protect the city's liability, that's all this is about. Cut down the bad trees, keep the good ones, put a long-term plan together over twenty years, you know, twenty percent every five years, something like that. There's only a hundred and some odd or seventy trees left, you could talk to every resident that has a tree easily and save all this time and money. Would have been a lot easier. No one's unreasonable, they're just people. That's all I have to say, just be reasonable. You know, when the tree is time to go, I'll be out there cutting it down myself, I promise. I got kids, that's the last thing I want, so. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our last speaker is Vicky Kirshenbaum.
Hi, my name is Vicky Kirshenbaum, thanks for the opportunity to share my comments. Our greenhouse gas reduction plan passed in twenty twenty-two states the urgent need for a long-overdue urban forest plan that includes an inventory of all trees on public property, health assessments, maintenance plan, and overall vision for the city. A strong, all-encompassing plan up to the contemporary standards as they have in Manhattan Beach and other cities. We've yet to see such a plan in Burbank, which might have prevented the misguided elimination of the aleppo pines. The initial plan to remove all the aleppo pines gave almost no notice to residents, no assessment of the health of the individual trees. It was a knee-jerk reaction, a quick fix, after two aleppo pines failed. An outside arborist was finally brought in, but had worked with the city previously, and so was not independent, and was directed to propose the lowest-risk plan going forward. She stated in her report, which is included in the agenda tonight, trees are living things, there is always risk. The only way to have the lowest risk, cut them all down. And so that is what she proposed, forty-seven trees are gone. The assessment of the remaining trees states removing them would have no aesthetic impact, no air quality impact, no energy use impact. I strongly question this assessment. Strikingly, many of the trees are designated in this same report to be in good condition and unlikely to fail. In this time of extreme heat and a steady increase in the heat island effect, cutting down mature trees which mitigate heat and sequester carbon should be a last resort. I urge you to protect as many of the remaining trees as possible. And finally, to add insult to injury, no native trees are being offered to replace the aleppo pines. Non-natives supply no nutrients to Burbank insects, birds, and wildlife. The trees offered include Jacaranda, native to South America, China pistache, native to China, Diadar cedar, native to the Himalayas, Canary Islands pine, native to the Canary Islands off Africa. Study after study shows it is imperative to plant native trees for climate change resistance. Our city needs an urban forest plan, we need to protect, protect mature trees, and we need to plant native trees to conserve water, fight soil erosion, support wildlife, and provide a resilient urban forest.
Thank you for your comment. All right. We have completed public comment for this report to council. Do we have any responses from staff?
Yes, so I will start with the last public speaker. The urban forest master plan, we're actually underway, council did approve funding for that. We have completed the inventory of all of our city-owned trees in our parkways and our park trees. We will begin the stakeholder meetings in January of twenty-five and will then go into community engagement, so that process is underway. As you may imagine, inventorying all over thirty thousand trees does take time, but that process is, is underway. Wanted to also mention that, just reiterate that these trees were assessed by, were assessed three times by independent arborists, certified arborists, risk assessors that concurred with staff's assessment that these trees were a higher risk of failure. So just wanted to address that, that comment. And I think those were the two that I, I wrote down, I may have missed. Happy to have myself or our environmental consultant address any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Any other responses from staff? No, okay, let's start with questions. Councilwoman Mullins.
Not necessarily my question, but I, I wanted to add to Ms. Garcia regarding, I heard the speaker earlier says about, they weren't giving the documents until just last Thursday. Can you address that for us?
Yes, thank you. So I, I appreciate that, Councilmember Mullins. So the, just wanted to go back to the, the draft MND was published in June for the forty-five days. The, really the only changes from the draft MND to the final MND was Appendix F, which were the comments, the public comments that were added to the final MND. If that answers that question.
So the, I'm assuming the only documents that were released on Thursday was the staff report when the agenda was posted, which council received it at the same time as the public did.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to follow up on that, because I'm still a little unclear. So when we say, and when the speaker mentioned Thursday, do, did they receive the MND on Thursday, or did they receive, they, they mentioned something being sent to them?
So when the agenda was posted, that's when it's available to the public. Staff has the information, contact information for all the individuals who provided comments to the draft MND. And they were notified that this item was going to be before the city council today, and they were notified of that. I don't recall when the responses to their comments were sent, their specific comments to the MND, but in terms of notification and when the final MND was posted, that's when they were notified. So they were, the document was available to them when it was posted to the city council, which is the same time the city council received the document, which was Thursday, I believe, that when it was posted.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Councilwoman Mullins, would you like to continue questions, or do you want me to go to somebody else? Don't want to put you on the spot, I'm not Nick.
I just wanted to clarify that because I think that's just a point of making sure that the public did get the information on time. The MND has been available at the city clerk's office, also online. Is that what I heard you say earlier? It's forty-five days, it's been posted, it's, it's been online, it's been available at the library. So the actual documents could have been reviewed prior to the staff report that you put together for us and the public to view. I just want to make sure that we're talking about the packet and what was available and what's not.
The draft MND, just to clarify, the draft MND and the final MND are essentially the same. The only difference is the, are the comments, so Appendix F, which are the comments that were included to the final MND.
And the draft MND was the one that was available to the public in the locations. Was it sent to these folks or no? I'm just trying to figure out the timeline here.
They were notified of where, how they can access it, yes. But no, we did not print out copies of the MND and provide it to them now.
Thank you, thank you. I'm just trying to get a clarity for the timeline and everything that happened. Who would like to ask questions? Councilwoman Rosati?
Thank you. Okay. Couple of questions. One, whose responsibility is it to water the trees?
Per the Burbank municipal code, it is the property owners adjacent to those trees are responsible for watering the parkway trees.
Okay. And the decision to plant which trees and we're procuring these trees, how was that made?
So for this specific project or just replacement trees or?
Well, Ms. Kirshenbaum made reference to these were native trees to us. So should we be looking at different trees? How are we making that decision?
I will ask Mr. Del Campo to come and talk to, we have a street tree master plan that will, that identifies trees per block to ensure that we diversify, have a diverse urban forest. I will mention that that, everything that has to do with our urban forest will be reviewed as part of our urban forest master plan. But I'll turn it over to Mr. Del Campo.
And I also want to include, I'm sure that when we started planting trees in the 40s and maintaining trees in the 40s, it's a lot different today because the science and the technology and the knowledge is a lot different. So if you could just kind of wrap that up.
Sure. And I'll have him introduce himself first, for those that may not know.
Hello, council members. Mike Del Campo, Parks and Recreation. Thank you for your time tonight. So first question, yes, we have a list of trees that we've developed over the years that are low drought tolerant, low water use trees that we have diversified over the neighborhoods. And this list is available, it's on our website. We also provide, if anyone emails us, we can provide it that way. But we have these trees that are set up to be planted in the neighborhoods. So that's why these trees were developed for the replacement. We also went, Marissa wanted us to go over and above, so we went and offered more, some different drought tolerant trees. And we are looking at native trees, but the residents of the neighborhood wanted some larger trees and a lot of the native trees that are available aren't as big and shady as what they're used to. So we were trying to accommodate that. So it's kind of a difficult situation to provide apples for apples on the same sense. So, but yes, we are looking at going native to a lot of areas that don't have trees currently. And that's going to be in our urban forest master plan that's being developed right now. And for your second question, does that help on the first question? For the selection of trees? How we picked them?
Yes, yeah. And I did notice, you know, I've seen some of the trees that have been planted in the past. And those trees were quite a bit bigger than I've ever seen. Is that, are those standard or is that unusual for this situation?
That was very unusual for the situation. We usually plant 24 to 36 inch box trees, a certain size, height tree. Those trees have the best success rate for planting. They also fit into the parkway. You can't plant anything, something too big. You've got to keep the roots and replanting a tree is very stressful. Due to the community wanting some larger trees to eliminate that, the difference of what happened, Marissa wanted us to go with bigger trees. We went 38 inch box trees, which, and there are some of them up to, you know, 17, 20 feet tall. These are really big trees. And you are going to see a little bit, there's more chance of failure for trees not to take. So, but we're actually doing, it's been pretty good. Like Marissa said, maybe 5%, which is not too bad. I want to get those fixed. But yes, we did go over and above on size-wise than what we normally plant. We usually do 24 to 38, 36. Okay. And then, so, and to your last question, yes, when those trees were planted, you know, 80, as a gentleman said earlier, counted the tree rings 65, 75, 85 years ago, these trees have been maintained by the city of Burbank over those, over these years. And urban forestry was not a science back then. It was basically forestry. So we were taking, we, the foresters at the time, I'm not that old. The foresters at that time were, you know, they were utilizing techniques and principles from the, from a natural native forest, not urban forestry. You're not dealing with residents, cars, pollution, you know, maintenance. People in the 60s and 70s and the 50s were dumping stuff on trees that wasn't healthy. That was just a common, kind of a common, kind of a common thing that, you know, I talked to my grandpa, oh, I've got some motor oil, go dump it in the, in the street. So that's not happening anymore. People know that's bad. Well, when we were trimming trees back in the 30s and 40s, when these trees were young and impressionable and supposed to be trained, these weren't certified arborists. These were city employees who were very interested in getting a city job and wanted, weren't scared to climb a tree, weren't scared to get into a bucket truck, and weren't scared to work with a chainsaw at heights. Since that time, since my time, urban forestry has become a science and we're studying how trees should be trimmed properly. The city hasn't done anything wrong because this wasn't available. But since then, we have since changed our outlook on the way tree trimming is done in the urban forest and what we need to do to an urban street tree. And as the gentleman said, these trees are 85, 95 years old and they can live to 150 years old. But that's in the forest. The Burbank is not a forest. Burbank is an urban environment with residents, kids, animals, and that kind of situation around. So we are, all urban foresters are being tasked to relook at trimming practices, maintenance practices, and all this. And this is all new in the last, in the last couple of decades. So, yes, things have changed since these trees were planted.
If I may add one, one comment to what Mr. Del Campo mentioned, aleppo pine trees are not native to Southern California. However, they're native to the Mediterranean region. However, the climate is very similar, which is why they've been successful here. But I did want to just clarify that they're not native to Burbank, just to clarify that. Not that I'm saying that they're, they're bad, but just wanted to make that note.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilwoman Mullins, and then I'll go to Councilwoman Anthony.
Thank you. Do we plant any more aleppo trees in Burbank?
No.
Okay. So some of the responses and emails that we received, they address a couple of things beside what Councilmember Rosati said. Another, one of the emails, they were addressing when the trees were planted, and they were planted in the summer, which is not, according to the emails, are not the right time of the year to plant. And the perception is that's why some of them have died. Can you talk a little bit and educate us about when do we plant? Is the summer bad versus the fall? And when do we do that?
Very good question. So it depends on the region you're in. Burbank, it's a beautiful city. It's got beautiful climate. It's, what is it, an average 76 degrees most of the time here? We can plant year-round. In certain parts of the country and the world, is it better to plant in the early spring, in end of winter? Absolutely. But Burbank doesn't really have those kind of weather conditions. So we can, we can plant whenever. But if we are planting in the summer, there is need for, make sure, you've got to be completely diligent on the watering. So that's where it comes back to the residents having to water their trees and they have to be, make sure that they're constantly up on watering those trees. It makes it more difficult for, because you've got to add more water. It's more work, not more difficult. The trees just as likely to succeed in the summer, winter, or fall here.
Thank you. But, so that brings me to the water question because a lot of the residents that written to us said, we, we're not aware that we're responsible to water. And then also, they discussed the drought situation and how often were they're supposed to be watering, since we have the two days and it goes down to one day. So a lot of the concerns and seem like maybe confusion more than anything else to whose responsibilities and what can they do?
I'll take that question. So, yes, so there's the water, the water restrictions. That only applies to your irrigation or the sprinklers. It does not prevent you from hand watering. So, yes. However, I completely understand that that is a concern, which is why, right, we wanted to make this as easy as possible and as less of a burden to our residents as possible, which is why we had never used those slow-release watering bags. You see them all over other communities, LA City and other residents. So we wanted to really encourage our residents to make sure that they take care of these trees. While that it was not an ideal time, right, in the summer, we also wanted to get ahead of the tree planting and make sure that we, you know, wanted our residents to know that, yes, we removed these trees, but, you know, we wanted to plant these trees. We wanted them to see us that we were, you know, we said we're going to replace these trees. We are going to replace these trees. And so, and so while, you know, I understand that it's kind of like you're stuck between a rock and a hard place, but I will tell you, if not driven through, through the addresses where we have removed and replaced these trees, these streets, streets look, you know, great. These trees do not look, right? These trees are not, you know, replacing these amazingly tall aleppos and that one stone pine that we replaced. We absolutely acknowledge that. But we were committed to replacing large trees. Many look great and they're thriving. I've talked to a couple of residents that I developed relationships with through this process, and they're really happy. There are some residents that have decorated their trees, put, you know, put lights. And, and so I, although it's not, you know, this is not what I want to do. This is not what Mike wants to do, right? As, as parks and recreation professionals, where, you know, removing trees is not something we enjoy. As a city, we do not want to remove trees. But safety, right, is a priority as a city. We want to make sure that our residents and our community are safe. These trees may look healthy, maybe, maybe healthy, but they present some risks to our community. And so we want to make sure that our residents are safe. And that is where, what's driven this project and why it's been very challenging for us to, you know, make these tough decisions. And these tough decisions, you know, have a lot of, you know, there's been a lot of, you know, it's not been easy. But again, we're trying to do the right thing for the community, for our city.
Thank you for that. And I, I do want to acknowledge that we have also received lots of emails from residents who are, I don't want to use the word begging, but who are literally saying, please remove our trees. We're concerned. And I know those emails are not shared with the public, but I do want to say it publicly and acknowledge those individuals as well because they are very concerned about what happens on their property and a tree could be falling on their property. And, and having to speak myself from experience, it is a terrifying moment when that tree is on top of your house and on your vehicles and, yes, a couple of vehicles that were damaged. So I completely understand. It can be terrifying. So I do want to echo and acknowledge that we do have the same individuals, you know, who are out there asking us to cut them. And we have a program and you're following the timeline when we need to do it. The one last question I have for right now is another individual also wrote to us about lack of maintaining the new planted trees. The concern is we're not maintaining them, trimming them or pruning them, and that could have an effect that they're not going to ensure to reach maturity. So I'm not an arborist, so I'm just basically passing on the information because that kind of caught my attention. You don't trim a new tree or a young tree. You have to wait a certain cycle, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So I think there is some misinformation perhaps, you know, expectation that we need to maintain and prune them to make sure they grow. So I just want to make sure that the public is aware that they can contact you and get that information from you. And one last thing, where can they get water bags if they need to for right now? Do they contact your department?
Yes, contact the forestry department and we'll have them delivered.
Do you have a number you can throw out there? Thank you. Those are my questions for right now, but we'll talk.
Councilwoman Anthony?
I just wanted to ask, why, why don't we plant aleppo pines anymore? What, what's wrong with aleppo pines?
There's actually nothing wrong with aleppo pines as a tree species itself. They just require a lot of space. So those trees, when they were planted in 85, 75 years ago, they weren't, they're not good for parkways. They're, they're too big.
We didn't have parkways back then.
Right. But then they had to put sidewalks in next to them. So the planning wasn't, you know, wasn't, the foresight wasn't there. So in a, in a park, we can plant them. In open space, we can plant them. They are very drought tolerant.
Do we have aleppo pines in our?
We have a few. We have a few in our parks, correct.
Are those, do we have any aleppo pines not in parkways that are at risk of failure?
We had one fail a couple of years ago.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's, that's, I have more later, but I'm done with questions.
Councilwoman Takahashi.
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor Takahashi, I'm sorry. This is like payback for me if you're watching, Nick.
No worries, no worries. All right. Just really quick to follow up on one of the questions that Councilmember Mullins mentioned about the hand watering. I remember when the, the watering limitations was announced originally, and even when we do different updates of like two, two days a week, three days a week, consistently, we see confusion about what that means. And so I think this is a case that kind of overlaps with that where the community is, you know, it's, it's, it's multiple parts, right? So I think that this is an opportunity to see how, when we message about the watering, to be really clear, not just with the aleppo pine situation, but partnering with, I think that would be BWP.
BWP.
BWP, to ensure that it's really clear that it's specifically for rotation watering for sprinklers, right, for the watering, the lawns. Okay. Because I think that hand watering, the emails we got about the restrictions on watering assumed that, that it was including hand watering. So would that be possible to work with BWP for the next, the next time that that messaging goes out?
Yes, we've actually been working with them because I absolutely understand the messaging, as well as getting word out about the slow release watering bags. I think there's opportunities for more partnerships with Burbank Water and Power in terms of water restrictions, for sure.
Thanks. Yeah. And I have to say that I was a resident of Burbank for, oh gosh, at least 12, 15 years before I realized I was responsible for my parkway tree. So, and fortunately, our tree has such deep roots that it gets enough water just with our own lawn watering and with the rain and everything. So it never really had a problem. But I can see how if one didn't know that, that would be a surprise. So I think that that's continued, continued messaging and continuing education is really important. And then...
Madam Mayor, if I could call a point of order that the audience should be respectful of the speakers and the council members who are trying to give attention to this matter?
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I'll be more blunt. Please stop shouting. I'm trying to let it go for a little bit, but if it keeps going, I'm going to have to call more points of order. And let's not get there. We all want to hear where this is going to go. So let's all be respectful.
And then, one, I think it was one of the emails, or maybe it was a commenter, that mentioned about why can't the city water the parkway trees? Can you explain a little bit about that on the residential streets?
Yes. Well, first, it's in the Burbank municipal code. However, that certainly can be changed. But one of the challenges... Um, but one of the challenges um, is with uh, if the city were to water these trees, we have residents who um, park their cars. And that becomes um, as you may imagine, really challenging uh, for the city. We have a water truck um, that has an arm that comes out. And so, um, it's really, would be very difficult for the city to drive around with this large vehicle. Um, we do water trees, newly uh, planted trees in commercial and industrial areas. Early morning, this is a, a shift that is uh, early morning, um, where we know that there are no vehicles. It's usually like parking restrictions, um, so that uh, we would hate to impose parking restrictions in residential areas um, to allow us to water these trees. I think that would be um, very impactful, but that would be the only way for the city to um, water these trees. But that's certainly uh, something that um,
Right.
And, and again, we would, don't have the, the resources internally, but that's something that
Right.
um, we could look to, to do if that is the desire of the council.
Okay. Yeah, and I, and I imagine that there would be many streets of trees to water.
Yes.
Um, okay. Um, and then you mentioned earlier, um, during your presentation, that there was a change of staff recommendation.
Correct.
Because we received uh, quite a number of materials from the community about their concerns about, um, so could you just share a little bit about what that means to, what your new staff recommendation is?
Uh, correct, so there is a, a one or two, I believe, emails from um, uh, the petitioner's um, a- attorney uh, with some uh, voluminous um, uh, material that staff want, and our consultants uh, want to take the, the opportunity to carefully review, to determine if there's substantial information um, that would uh, change our initial recommendation. And so, that is why we want to defer um, that decision. Uh, we, because safety, right, these trees are important and that higher risk is still there. Uh, we know we're entering into the rain and wind uh, season. Uh, we want to come back in early twenty twenty-five with a recommendation. And um, so that is our plan, that is why our recommendation has changed, because we wanna make sure that we are um, being responsible to that piece of information that was received late this afternoon. And it's extensive, so.
Okay, great, thank you for expanding that a little bit. And when it comes back, do you expect that it would be a staff report that comes back again? That we have a chance to follow up with questions, or do it, yeah?
Good evening, Council, Jill Vanderbord, Chief Assistant City Attorney. Uh, it, it really depends on the analysis that we do and what the recommendation's gonna be, how we proceed in, in January.
Okay, great, thank you. And I have one last question. Um, it mentions in the staff report that we've planted twice as many trees as we've removed, right? Where do those extra fifty percent of trees, where are they besides there? Cuz we have the replacement of the ones that were actually removed and then there's fifty percent more, so where are those, where are they at?
Um, there are, within those, those trees and streets uh, in those neighborhoods, vacant parkways. Either um, tree, uh, parkways where trees were once there, or there were never trees. Um, we canvassed um, those neighborhoods and um, planted uh, trees.
Great.
Yep.
All right, well, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, I have one follow-up to that question. So, when you say those trees, the, essentially the other half, because we have twice as many, and they were parked, uh, or they were planted in nearby parkways and all that, are we saying geographically near the trees that were cut down?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, taking us back to water bags and all that, um, I, I, I share the concern that I think some of my colleagues have, have expressed here. Uh, it's not widely available information. It, it's not something that I, I think our residents are aware of. We've, you've heard some folks here express that we don't know, our homeowners don't know.
Correct.
That, that information should be widely available. It should, it should be as, as well known as where I can check out a library book, right? Um, and then with that, another piece of concern, I, when in the process, let's say I'm buying a house in Burbank, where in this process would I find out that I am responsible for watering the tree on my sidewalk? When does that happen?
We don't, I mean, it's not something that is widely like, shared and it's, it's posted, it's not. I mean, there's a lot of uh, uh, information in the code that I don't believe, you know, residents know about, what responsibilities. I will share with you that um, through this process, there's a lot of information. My staff is actually working on um, creating a, a webpage uh, with regards to our um, parkway trees. Uh, information that um, educate, how we, how we educate, uh, educational information that's readily available. Um, but also through our Urban Forest Master Plan that we're, we're undergoing. It's gonna be a lot of, of uh, in, recommendations that I believe, uh, that will come out of that process that will help us to improve. I don't, I don't disagree that there were um, uh, there was lots of room for improvement throughout this process. Um, I'm very open to, you know, lessons learned and, and how can we do better, what can we do? Um, and certainly, there are many things that um, we've taken note. Um, and certainly, this is um, you know, the watering and the responsibilities and the education um, are, are high up there on that list.
So, that's a huge problem, I will say that, that one in particular, and something that I think all of my colleagues have kind of alluded to. Um, like, I'll, I'll get to them in one second. I, I think one that we alluded to, and I know we're, we're gonna get to discussion, but I, I, I would be surprised if my colleagues don't all agree that that, that information needs to get out to folks. And it's something that could literally be put in our BWP mail that all of us receive at some point. So, just one, one glaring issue there and then one concern, cuz I think it's the first time a lot of us find out too, who's responsible for those parkway trees. Councilmember Rosati.
I just realized why I'm here, it's my calling. When you buy a house in Burbank, there is a Burbank disclosure. And on that disclosure, it talks about wood shake roofs, it talks about Burbank have the strictest uh, smoking ordinance in the, in the nation. It talks about Burbank having an airport. So, I believe if you reach out to the Burbank Association of Realtors, we can add this phrase that you are responsible to water your trees per the Burbank Code. And every time you sell a house in Burbank, you'll have to sign a document saying that you understand what the requirement is. Done.
You got multiple avenues here, and I think, look, you put it in there first, you get a reminder in the mail from BWP? No excuses, but right now, it's on us to get that info out there. Thank you, Councilwoman Rosati. Um, follow-up question, Vice Mayor Takahashi.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that suggestion. I was kinda thinking, I wonder if he has a suggestion? So, there are a number of uh, single-family homes though that are rented. And so, I'm curious if it's the renters' responsibility or the owner's responsibility? And if somebody's renting, do they need to get the notice, or is it just, if you could share, that'd be great.
It's listed as a, as a property owner, but we know that there are renters. Um, it's actually on my list um, for BWP. So, BWP, we're working with them on landscape, you know, pre-approved landscape uh, plans. And so, whether it's, again, uh, marketing, right, they have access to um, newsletters and a lot of material that goes out through their billing. Um, and that goes right to residents, uh, renters as well. So, we have, we do have a plan um, to get information to our residents. Um, I, I wanna make sure that um, the information and how we communicate to our residents is um, friendly. Um, it's um, it's uh, you know, easy, it's friendly, you know? Um, I can tell you from the number of emails that um, we all receive from residents about trees. Um, a lot of people know about their responsibilities and know who's responsible for what, but there are many that don't. Um, but I also wanna make sure that, that it's easy, it's quick. Um, and so, absolutely, we know that we have, thank you, um, Councilmember Rosati for, for pointing me in that direction. I had not thought of them, but definitely working with some of our internal partners, um, PIO and BWP. Um, and certainly, uh, we do have lots of nonprofits, making sure that information is in multiple languages um, is really important to me as well. Um, so, we are um, hoping to uh, uh, make sure that this information um, is out there and.
Yeah, thank you for that. Again, just wanna reiterate, even, even myself as a tenant, I would love to pick up a free water bag and put in front of the lovely tree we have on our parkway. So, I think it's, it's just getting the message out there. We will all figure it out once the message is out there, but it's hard to know if it's not directly in front of you. Um, okay, those are my only two questions. Does anybody have any further questions? Councilwoman Rosati?
Just one last question. When we uh, give someone a tree, do they get instructions on how to maintain the tree? And maybe we should have some sign something saying, hey, I received this, the homeowner?
I believe they're given some information, um, but actually, I'm gonna um, share that Mr. Prescott was uh, on vacation somewhere and he actually shared a picture of, of something that was really um, uh, I found really, um, he probably doesn't remember. Um, it was a tag, um, but it was, it, it was really uh, great. So, again, it's just really uh, it was a tag, right? Planted a tree and it was really, um, I don't wanna say the word cute, but it was really cute. Um, it's like, hi, I'm, you know, and I have the tree species and, you know, please take care of me, water me. It, you know, it's just, it's just making it so that um, it's not just this, you know, white piece of paper that says, here are the instructions and people are gonna throw it away, right? So, so we're looking at ways to um, to give uh, that information. And then also have it available on our website for those, the residents. I, we know that people receive information through different um, uh, different, different ways. And so, we wanna make sure that when a tree is planted, right, they, they have that little easy, quick reference. Uh, but then follow it up and, and so, yeah.
Any other questions?
I just have an added comment to what you're saying. Um, we must have been in the same place, Mr. Prescott, because I was gonna ask you if we can put tags uh, yeah, on the tree, and then they have how often you water the tree and the phone number in the event something happens. So, um, something that is, thank you for bringing that back.
Can we have the tag be shaped like a tree?
Essentially, we're hearing communication is key in multiple forms, through your first notice, through the tags, and through your BWP notice, there's many ways. Any other questions before we get into discussion? Okay, great. Um, who would like to start with our discussion on this item? Councilwoman Mullins?
Thank you. Um, well, there's really a lot of good information that was given out tonight and a lot, hopefully, educating um, members of the community who have emailed us and reached out. And a lot of, I mean, I have pages here of all the emails that we received with all their concerns. Or some of them are repetitive, so we do read the emails and we do share some of the concerns. And um, as you stated earlier, Ms. Garcia, it's, it's really about safety. Um, we don't want to kill trees in the city of Burbank. Uh, the last thing that's on my agenda is how do we destroy trees uh, here in the city and take away our beauty that we have on our streets? I enjoy them, I have lots of trees on my streets, I enjoy the walks and seeing the trees. Uh, but I'm also very aware of the danger that it can cause a tree falling on a house or property. As I indicated earlier, it happened to me personally and it was not fun. So, I understand the risk that we sometime take. Um, and I personally don't wanna get that call that somebody was injured because lack of our uh, efforts into trying to maintain or remove trees that we believe could be posing dangers to our um, residents in the community. Um, having said that, I think it's also important um, that we address, as you indicated early, the, the report that we, I believe, received, it was late this afternoon. Um, that something the staff needs to look at and read. Um, it was what, four hundred and fifty pages plus, I can say, um, that none of us really had an opportunity to read. And it's unfair for, for council, myself, to make a decision. It's unfair for staff to go further with the recommendation, in my opinion, to ask council to, to give you any directions until, we wanna hear what's in the report. We wanna know, are we on the right path, are we not? Do we need to do, take any further action? Um, but I am, I'm fully convinced that um, we have been working a long time on this. And um, I know we've heard this issue have come before us and, and we had court orders and things are, you know, moving along in certain directions that may not make everybody happy. Um, I do personally wanna definitely wait before giving any further directions to staff. Uh, we had these questions, we needed to be answered, so the public know that we addressed their concerns, or some at least. Most of the council here had different questions. Um, but to wait until January and find out um, what the end results from our city attorney, from staff uh, in regards to that report that we received this afternoon. And hopefully, by then, we're able to make a decision. And I keep my fingers crossed uh, that we have no issues between now and January. I hate to say that we don't want rain or wind, but I know we need rain. But however I say that, so we can make sure that we, um, our community is safe. And I'm personally willing to wait until staff comes back and let us know what's in the report, so we can make the right decision for our community. So, with that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mullins. Councilwoman Anthony?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, uh, thank you, thank you, uh, Councilmember Mullins. That's, I, I think you, you covered the two, the two points tonight uh, very clearly. Yes, this all started because, you know, we, as a city, had seen some damage during uh, the rainy season. Um, I remember when I was sitting as mayor two years ago, there was a very large tree that fell down um, right off of Pass Avenue, and it was early in the morning. And um, s- um, I believe um, someone from uh, my Burbank News was tweeting about it. And it was, the pictures um, were astounding. Uh, I actually drove down there to take a look at it in person. And um, I had a meeting uh, later with the city manager and um, you know, asked basically what our policy was. We, we've had, we've had trees in the city as long as this city has been a city. And we've had trees fail um, for as long as we've had trees. And the changes to the environment, the recent droughts, the changes to watering schedules um, may have created a, a sort of blip in our timeline and caused the need for more mitigation. Um, we won't know until we look at all of these documents, we won't know until we've studied this material. It's, it's unfortunate that this has all been handled from the lens of liability. Um, I understand that that is obviously important and must be addressed. And even myself, when I first saw those pictures, my first thought was, people are gonna get hurt, what are we gonna do about it? I failed to understand the implications of what we were asking our residents to do to, to remove their, part of their house. You, you sell houses, the tree comes with it, right? That's, they, they're involved with it, um, they're dedicated to it. And I think, I think moving forward, not addressing the issue of collaboration with the folks who are losing a piece of their property, losing a piece of their home. Um, I think there was, there was a missed opportunity there. Um, I also think something like this should have been dealt with years ago. Years ago, we should have had a plan in place. Um, but second best time is now and it's important for us to do this the right way, to do the right thing in the right time. Um, so, yeah, I'm not, I agree with my colleague, I'm not comfortable moving forward today. Um, thank you for updating staff's um, recommendation. Thank you for updating staff's recommendation. This is obviously very difficult. And, and like you said, this is not the job that you wanted to do at this, at, at this department. I feel, I feel bad for somebody who comes along who's worked with trees for so long and you're basically being tasked to take them down. So that must be tough. I'm okay moving forward with the updated staff recommendation, waiting until January.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Rosati?
I'm, I'm going to be brief because I think I want to review the additional information. This is not a new issue to us in Burbank. We had to rip down trees on Magnolia because there were ficus trees. Clearly, they're beautiful trees, but they're the wrong trees to be planted in our parkways. And they were lifting up sidewalks and curbs and damaging sewer lines and water lines. So this is not a new issue. I know, I know your department's making efforts. Ripping down 80 trees, it's, it's got to be super costly. I know what it cost to trim my trees and I can only imagine the thousands of thousands of dollars that we're spending on this and we wouldn't do it if, if we didn't have to. And then the efforts of having three arborists come out and making three recommendations. I, I, on my normal route to pick up my dad, two years ago, a tree fell on someone's house. They've had a blue tarp in their house for two years and just recently, they must have settled with the insurance company or something. They're now finally getting their roof put back on their house and the front of their house is being rebuilt. So if it does come down, it could be disastrous and inconvenient for a long time. So I do want to get the additional information before we make a final call on this, but I appreciate your, your report tonight. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Thank you. I echo what my colleagues have said very well, so I won't add too much more. Just wanted to add my voice that safety of our residents is paramount. That the life and health of our, of our residents is above all. But I also understand and I'm very, you know, I think we're all very aware of how also communication with our residents is very important too. And that there's a lot of opportunities that we've had to learn through this process and continuing to learn and to improve. And I'm also, I want to, I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues that we need to go through the materials that were sent. And so I'm glad that staff changed the recommendation so that we can go through those materials and do our due diligence with those materials. At the end of the day though, as Councilmember Mullins said, is that we do need to make sure that the safety of our, our residents is, is high highest priority. So trying to juggle all those things at once, trying to do the best we can to, to satisfy all of that at the same time. And at this time, I agree with my colleagues that to push it to January, table to January. And I really want to see the, what the staff thinks about the, the comments that were provided today in January. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is not an easy decision to make and an easy issue to address, as my colleagues have all pointed out in one way or another. On the one hand, we have folks asking us to not cut down these trees and their pleas are very heartfelt and they have good points. These trees, like Councilwoman Anthony mentioned, they're part of their home. They bought this home with the tree in mind. So I understand it's very difficult for them to go through this. On the other hand, we have, and it's the same number of voices, asking us to cut down trees because they're afraid to sleep in the bedroom that is closest to the tree because God forbid it falls on their house. So there's two sides to this issue that are, you know, often this council finds collaboration and finds a way to make at least most people to a degree happy. And it is hard for us to do that, but we often find a way, often find a way to find consensus and common ground and no offense to staff, often tweak your staff recommendations and switch them around to what we feel is a best fit for the community. Tonight, we have information, but we don't have all of the information. And this has, in the last year, been a council that listens to the facts, looks for the facts, asks for the data, the numbers, the information on the paper and asks detailed questions. I think this was the least amount of questions I've heard from most of my colleagues tonight because the reality is we don't have all the information. I want to read the 400-page report that was sent to us. I haven't read that tonight. I'm not comfortable making a decision when I haven't read something because it was, you know, given to us right before the meeting. And I think some better communication can be had between staff and then those folks so that that does not happen again, so that we have a situation where everyone has all the information ahead of time. We, we should strive for that. So we're all coming into this well-informed. And at the end of the day, a decision is going to be made that doesn't make one side or one party happy. We've all shared our commitment that we're making the decision that we make at the end of the day for the best well-being and the safety of the residents of Burbank. But we need to have all the information and everybody needs to come to the table with some consensus of, of what the information is at the beginning of the meeting. And again, this council listens to data, this council listens to facts. And based on his questions today, Mr. Rosati is right in line with that, so I appreciate that. And we're going to continue to be a data-driven council staff, so be ready for that. And I agree with my colleagues, we do not have the facts tonight. We all would like to read that report. And if I could ask one thing, I would like for us to have the ability to review that report with staff ahead of time so that we can all ask our questions like we do in the pre-meetings and make sure that we feel comfortable, confident and informed ahead of time. So I agree with my colleagues, we are not ready, we need to delay this. And those trees will be around for Christmas for the folks who, who've asked.
Madam Mayor, or City Attorney, do we need a motion to continue? If so, I'll make that motion. That would be great. Motion made.
Second.
Motion by Rosati, second by Mullins to delay. Can we get a vote?
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Yes.
And Mayor Perez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank y'all, we'll see you back in January. All right, and that is a record for tonight because now we will hear council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments, attendance at conferences, regional meetings and community events. Who would like to begin? Who's ready to go? Councilwoman Anthony?
Uh, thank you. On Friday night, on Friday night, I attended the Burbank High School Holiday Music Festival. On Sunday night, I attended the John Burrows Music Holiday Festival. So I play no favorites.
Your festival weekend. Uh, Council, uh, who wants to go next? Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Yeah, I just have one thing, I guess, I, I thought I was, I don't know. Just did one thing since our last council meeting and that is attending the Valley Economic Alliance Annual Board Meeting and Board Installation in Calabasas. And it was nice, it was nice to be in Calabasas, driving to Calabasas and back, not so great. But, but they were so very welcoming there and I, I just so appreciate our partnership in the Valley Economic Alliance with the Calabasas, San Fernando, LA and, I'm missing somebody, Glendale, Glendale. So that's really great to work together with them and see what all the different cities are working on. We didn't get to show our video though. There was a technical air blip and we didn't get to show it.
Yeah, no, we did not. I'll speak more about that in a minute.
Did you guys carpool or no?
No.
I had to get there like early to talk. Councilwoman Rosati?
Real quick, I went to the Jam Creative Program at the Colony Theater. I support that, the theater quite a bit and it was a lot of fun and it was in the spirit of, of the holiday season. And I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday and a Great New Year.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Mullins?
I have one big item on the agenda, I mean, on my to-do list. I did attend the grand reopening ceremony for Barry Burnett Realty. Fifty-one and a half years of business in the city of Burbank, amazing work. He actually just relocated his business from Magnolia to Olive. So it was really good to, to be there. And then we had the reorg meeting yesterday, feel like it was a year ago, but it was just yesterday, feel like it was a long time. Yeah, I think we were all here, I felt like.
The feeling that it was a year ago is mutual.
Yeah. So that was yesterday and I too would like to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, joyful Kwanzaa, Happy Holidays and New Year. And we'll see everyone here in three weeks, January 14th.
Yeah.
We're off, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mullins. And I, I had a busy week. On Wednesday, December 11th, I took a tour of World Empanadas. If you haven't been, it is a fascinating tour, get to see how, how the empanada is made. It's great, they're a wonderful business, shout out to Chris. Thank you for all you do for our community and excited to hear more about the inner workings of our small businesses so you can find better ways to help them out. That same day, I had our Board of Library Trustees meeting, last one for the year. There were some great updates on safety at the library and got to have a good meeting with our new Library Services Director, so welcome, Mr. Lashley. And then that same night, I somehow made my way to Long Beach and attended the Cal City's LA Candy Division Annual City Holiday Reception. On Thursday, December 12th, I attended the Valley Economic Alliance 30th Annual Board of Directors Meeting. That's why I could not be at the Realty Anniversary Ceremony. Thank you, Councilwoman Mullins for covering there. And yes, I too took the lovely hour and change trek to Calabasas where when it was time to share our City of Burbank video, the projector in the Calabasas Founder's Hall stopped working and so they just had me talking for a solid like 12 minutes. Shout out to PIO because you gave me a pretty long script. Everybody else who presented their videos was just like, I'm from the city of so-and-so, here's our video. And so they were worried for me because they thought I was going to do the same. And I was like, no, I can recite half the video right here. So thank you PIO for letting us find a way still. And to the Valley Economic Alliance, we love you, we love partnering with you. Come have your board installation back in Burbank next year. Then finally, on Sunday, December 15th, I had the lovely opportunity to present certificates to the Zuppeteers, the puppeteers who provide lovely free community shows out of their garage for the folks on Oak Street. They're phenomenal. If you don't know about them, you can follow them on Instagram, that's Zuppeteers with a Z. They, they have free shows on the weekends, they, they're starting to get a large crowd, so it's really good for them. But they really bring this opportunity to learn how to be a marionette to our young people and have had folks who have gone through it since elementary school through high school. So it's a great extracurricular for kids. It was great to be with them, great way to start my holiday season. And yeah, that's all I did, so fun week. Go ahead.
One thing I forgot, I want to mention today, I went to the city staff true and hot chocolate truck. That was at, yeah, right, at CSB, I could squeeze it between things and it was Mexican hot chocolate. So it was so good. So anyway, just, I think it's really awesome that we do stuff for our staff like that. We have breakfast for our staff and we, so many cool events. So whoever organized that, thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, now is the time for additional agenda item introduction. Do member of the coun, do members of the council have any additional agenda items to introduce? Councilwoman Anthony?
I got just one. I got a first step on sending a letter to the Airport Authority and their General Manager, something about how the city of Burbank supports a living wage and a comprehensive worker retention policy for onsite employees at the new Burbank Airport, something that's in line with council goals, with our own labor policies and stuff.
Mr. City Manager?
Can I just ask one clarifying question?
Yeah, sure.
As far as what you mean by a living wage, if you could just define that for us?
Actually, what I'd like to do is have it be in line with our city's policy on worker retention and worker compensation is, is what I.
So I think this has to wait for your other agenda items to come back because I don't know that the, that the city has a policy directly on point.
Ah.
Because you have a pending agenda, agenda item which we can't discuss because this is.
When is, do we have a timetable on that? Oh, that's right. Okay, let me, let me wait on this then. Let me wait on this. Okay. I'll wait, I'll wait on that.
Councilwoman Anthony would suggest you confer with them and see what.
So I guess I don't have anything to add to the agenda.
Councilwoman Rosati?
Do you have ink in your pen? Want to see how we can creatively bring back the Burbank on Parade. Maybe a slimmed down version. I know that the cost of the parade is, is because of street closures.
So, yes, go ahead.
We'll do a first step report, bringing back the possibility of a streamlined Burbank on Parade.
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily have to be in the same location. It could be around here where there's less street closures, but yeah.
It'll be a discussion of Burbank on Parade.
Got it, got it.
And whether or not we bring it back will be a question for the council.
Second, I know it's, February is bill season for our, our representatives. And I want to see, one, should we be asking our Assemblymember Schultz for some bills to write that could benefit us? And I had a conversation with him regarding incentivizing development and writing a bill for capital gains reductions to turn over property, so.
We are going to be bringing back soon our legislative platform and I think that's a perfect discussion to launch right into that.
Okay, but February, right? Because the, I know the deadlines is February.
February, yeah.
When's the end of bill writing season? February?
Yeah.
So I'm concerned we're going to miss it.
Okay, so what, what's your request then? Do you have a specific bill?
I, well, that specific bill is incentivized development. Yeah, I talked to him about it and I want to stay on him about it.
Okay, so can you just repeat it one more time?
Incentivize development with possible capital gains reductions to property owners so that we could turn over property.
Okay.
Can I get a letter recommend, recommending it? Thank you. And then lastly, so many people, we have a beautiful building here, our deco architecture. So many people have asked me, why doesn't our fountain work? Could we get a report on that?
Absolutely, so I, I, absolutely, yeah.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. I don't have anything, so nobody else? No, I've given you all enough grief this last year. I have, I have pending items. In fact, I think I asked you about Burbank on Parade once and I'm, crickets, crickets. I asked them. Okay. So now it is the time for adjournment. I just want to point out that my notes say 9:50 and I'm getting everybody out of here at 9:20. Take that, Nick. We will now be adjourning the meeting to Tuesday, January, January 14th, 2025 for a joint meeting in the council chamber, 275 East Olive Avenue, second floor. Thank you, Burbank, have a lovely holiday season with your families and loved ones. On behalf of all of us at City Council, we wish you the happiest of holidays. Thank you and good night.